City Council meeting to order. Kendra, please call the roll.
Mayor Welby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubella?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
A quorum is present.
We have Boy Scout Troop 1407 here, and I think someone's going to come on out and lead us in the pledge. So please rise. What is your name?
Robert Downing.
Robert?
Downing.
Downing, okay, fantastic, thank you.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert, thank you. Item two is the Proclamations and Presentations. It'll be the Memorial Day Parade. Come on up here, Chairman Ellis, and I think myself and Councilman Rubella will come on down here as Councilman Rubella lays onto the parade and we can... You need a mic, though, don't you? Can we get a mic? Steve will come out with a mic. Oh, there... Thank you, John. Perfect. There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
Am I live?
Is it?
Let's see it.
Good, 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 thanks. I'd like to invite up next year's Parade Committee Chairman Pamela Mason to help with this and introduce the rest of the committee again. Kyle Nicholson, he's working something right offstage, he'll be back in a minute. Robert Muha, former chairman of the Parade Committee. Jenna Franklin, who's our communications chief. Maria Gallagher could not be here, she's with the attendant to her sister who just had surgery. She's a volunteer coordinator. Cheryl McKee, a new member of the committee. And Renee Myers, who is... Did these very special trophies. And of course, Dave Rubella, who's been on the Parade Committee for many years and is really the face of the Parade. So it's an honor to have you all here to attend this presentation. And I'd like to start with the first award for best color guard, Captain Joe Franchek from the Detroit, US Border Patrol Detroit Station. And that's the far one on the end.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Gray make it in? Okay, the best high school band was the Renaissance High School Band. Their band director was supposed to be here tonight, maybe he'd been a few minutes. So the best band overall is one well-known to the whole community here, it's the Orbisones.
Appreciate, appreciate all the years you've participated in the parade. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is beautiful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very special group coming ready to come up right now. I was a soldier for forty... For thirty years, and I jumped out of airplanes, and I didn't have the bravery to do what these guys did. It's the submariners. And this is the best patriotic float, best, and it's the US submarine veterans. Would you all please come up front?
Oh, yeah, you can get in the middle, should we get in the middle? You want to get in the middle, right here? Okay, okay. Fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you for participating, we appreciate it really good. Happy to see you next year. All right, thank you, thank you.
And the overall, for using the audience, if you haven't noticed, we have a slide here with the winners, so you can get an idea. That float was in fact built by some of these gentlemen. Speaking of floats, the best overall entry, I'm going to be on this float next year because it looks like so much fun. Stan Ye and the Stan Ye's Collision Pool Party.
Congratulations, Stan, thanks for being in the parade, we really appreciate it. Got a big crew here. Anthony?
Yeah.
How are you? Nick, how you doing? Boy, oh, yeah, how are you? Nice to see you.
(inaudible).
Okay, Ken, how are you?
Good.
All right. We getting a picture here? Everybody get in here.
No, you're...
Get in there, Pam, get on the side there, Pam, let's go.
Go.
Dave.
(inaudible).
Good?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, guys, we'll see you next year, right?
(inaudible).
That's the highlight of the difference.
Thanks. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you very much. That does look like a lot of fun, doesn't it? They squirt guns and everything, that's a blast. And now for one that's really a bit more poignant and very touching, and I will tell you, I got a knot in my throat when I saw it. This is the mayor's choice. It's St. Clair Shores Baseball Softball Association. It's Arlington and the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Fantastic. You guys participate not only in the parade, you participate in all of the events we have in the city. We really appreciate the St. Clair Shores baseball, so they do a great job for us. Come on in here, Dave. Fantastic, thanks a lot. Yes, we'll see you next year, no matter what you say.
And for the Parade Committee Chairman's choice, it was the American Polish Century Club. Hey, it's a float that's got the Pope on it.
Thank you, thank you so much for participating, we appreciate it. Yes, no problem, right in here, come on in. Perfect, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Okay, well, the next one, the last award is the best special entry, and it's Rory the Lion's mascot. And only, you know, it would take a miracle to get Rory the Lion's mascot here, wouldn't it? That's what your Parade Committee does. Thanks for coming, man.
Thanks for coming, Rory. We're going to have a good year, we're going to have a good football year, baby?
Have it.
All right. Thank you, fantastic. Hang on to that, Rory, I like that better. Okay, oh, there you go. Are we going to get a picture? Come on.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thanks for coming, we appreciate it. We appreciate it.
And if you didn't notice, that's Hawaiian blue, that's... That's fine. Okay. (applause). Play the last slide. And save the date, 5/25/25, easy to remember. She'll be in charge.
Yeah, just on behalf of the city, I do speak for the city, thank you for all the hard work you do. It's a great parade, it is a year-long project, a lot of hours and work goes into it. And as you see, the people in the community love it, right? The crowds are huge, as they always are, so you've kept a tradition that's been going on for 71 years strong and alive, I really appreciate it. Dave, thanks for being, I think, the chairman now for the last two years, and I know you're going to be really involved next year, but Pam, looking forward to having you as the leader of the 72nd Memorial Day Parade, so we can't wait for it all, so.
Pam, here's an official umbrella, so it never rains on your parade. Dave, it never rained on your parade. And Dave?
Well, it came close.
This is the closest we could get to one of your awards.
And I would be remiss if I didn't go back and thank Dave Rubella, right? He's been part of this parade since it's come back into the city, so it's... We appreciate all your effort in this thing, too.
Can't do this without the full support of the mayor, council...
All the people. Takes a lot. All right. Thank you. Hey, there you are.
(inaudible).
They didn't, so we'll... Dave, we'll just put that here, you want to take this? You take it? Okay. Think they showed up, right? Renaissance High School, right?
Is anybody here from Renaissance?
Okay.
You'll get it to them. All right, we'll get it to them. We'll get it to them. It's a long way.
Item three is Audience Participation on Agenda Items. Two minutes regarding... I get two minutes to speak regarding agenda items. Kendra, do we have any?
Mayor, we have one.
All right.
Andrew Kincanon, speaking on item number seven.
All righty. Evening, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hello?
Sir, hang on for one second. Kendra, hold on. Yep, if people are going to leave on the parade, let's... We'll have the crowd filter out. There you go. Make it a little easier, then we can listen intently, sir. Okay, Kendra, you're all... You're all good? Yes, sir, tell us your name again, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Kincanon, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Smith, Bovel, and Saginaw.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and members of council. I'm speaking out today with respect to Agenda Item Seven, which is the Kroger proposal for site plan approval to add a gas station. I represent Chillbox LLC, which runs a number of gas stations and convenience stores and operates at 23001 on Harper. As the council is surely aware, the proposal for Kroger to add gas station facilities and dispensers would essentially create, in our view, a significant traffic glut and significant traffic risk. Now, it's my understanding that there's basically two means of ingress and egress into that shopping center. One is off Harper, the other's off Nine Mile. But essentially, what we fear would be created by the proposal, if it were granted for Kroger to have the gas station, is you'll have a considerable number of increased cars going to that location, people leaving my client's facility heading left, people leaving the Kroger facility heading right. And you're going to have... There's no proposal, to my knowledge, to add any new signal there or anything of that nature for purposes of traffic control. So we think it would be a very dangerous scenario. I don't know how much of a need there is for that gas station at that site in the first instance, but again, from my client's perspective, it's going to introduce a real traffic problem. And so I would ask that the council consider, I know you're going to consider it later tonight, some form of a traffic study or something to... Because we truly believe, if there are traffic experts that are consulted on that, I think they will advise the council of the risk that we see. It's not merely theoretical, it's a real one. You're going to have increased traffic volume, and it's going to be increased or decreased safety as a consequence of that volume. So we would ask that the council, don't do anything with respect to the site plan, at least don't approve it pending a traffic study. And Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate the time, unless the council has any questions for me, I appreciate the chance to comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kendra, you said one? Okay, thank you. Item four is the Alexander Lavon 2024 Canal Dredge, consideration of necessity for the creation of a special assessment district for dredging and adopt a resolution to set a second public hearing. So 4A is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to a public hearing regarding the Alexander Lavon 2024 Canal dredging. Does anyone want to be heard during this public hearing? Yes, sir, come on up, state your name, please.
Hello, Terence Tarrentine, 22434 Alexander. I just want to thank you for pushing forth the dredge, allowing us to make it a usable canal again, and anything we can do, or I can do to help you with your efforts, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to be heard regarding the dredging? Yes, yes, there'll be another one, July 15th. Mr. Eri, why don't you mention that again, instead of just telling me?
Yeah, if council approves this tonight, then all really that's up tonight is to adopt a resolution, which will ultimately set a public hearing for July 15th, where comments may be made by the general public and objections may be heard to the proposal. Thank you.
So anyone else, as of now, to this public hearing? Not, I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to 4B to adopt a resolution to create the special assessment district and to set a public hearing on July 15, 2024, to review the assessment role, hear objections, and confirm the rule. Mr. Lent?
Yeah, just to give a little bit of background to council, this canal is a little bit different than most of our other canals. This Alexander Canal actually has a county drain that leads right into the canal. As the city's portion, we, along with a small portion from the county, are responsible for cleaning the canal up into the mouth. That is what has been budgeted in our budget. The association is looking to do from the mouth into the open waters, it is very low there, too, so extend it. So they had a member of their district, Alec Lentz, went out, got the authorization, got over the 66% to be able to do from the mouth into the open waters. And they are piggybacked off of our contract, they have their own contract, but they're able to get the unit prices that the city got because of our portion that we are doing. So just wanted to give that a little bit of background information. All the logistics and the numbers are in your packet, but I wanted at least for the audience members, so it is a little bit different than most of our canals in our community.
Again, this is just to adopt the resolution for another public hearing on July 15, 2024. This is to hear the objections and then confirm that. So, questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. The petitions were included in the last packet when we set the hearing, just confirming with administration that we have verified and certified that they have passed by the requisite minimum two-thirds vote.
That is correct.
Okay, I will move to approve and set the hearing.
Support. Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor? Aye. All oppose? Seven-zero, so it'll come back to us on the 15th of July. Item five will come back also at the July 15 agenda. Item six is request to issue a quota Class C and liquor license with Sunday sales AM and PM to MCM Hospitality DBA Docs Grill House at 25225 Jefferson. Who's here for the petitioner? We're writing that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
How are you?
Great. I'm Kelly Allen, tonight on behalf of the petitioner, and my law firm is Atkinson Need and Allen. With me tonight are two of the owners, where are you? Anthony Mancini and Patty Kukula Chalinski. And I want to describe to you a little bit about the concept, the applicants, your ordinance. We have filed an application, complete applications, with your clerk's office, Abby has been fantastic, and with your police department has also been great. All of those are complete, you have departmental reviews in front of you, except for building, as the building is not constructed yet. As you may know, the site is under construction now. The same group of people, different company, bought the building, and, you know, it used to be the gourmet house, long, long ago.
Yes.
And I think it has been vacant for a couple of years now. And so we're before you tonight to ask you for your approval for a quota Class C license with various permits. And it's been a really long time since the city has granted a quota, so I'm just going to give a little, you know, 2.0 refresher on what that means. A quota license means that the state of Michigan authorizes to various municipalities one quota on premise. This is Class C for consumption of beer, wine, and spirits on the premises for every 1,500 people in your population. You have 39 of these kinds of licenses authorized to you as the city of St. Clair Shores. You have allocated and issued 38 of those licenses. Best I can tell, it's been 15 or more years since you've actually issued a quota license, maybe not?
No.
I couldn't, okay.
No, we've given some, I think maybe five of them, since 2013, so...
Okay. So, all right?
Or four.
I stand corrected. Then you know the way it works.
You.
Every 10 years, there's a census, and the census will adjust the quota for each municipality, whether you go up or down. So you've got one left, the next census that would be certified would be in the year 2030. It takes about a year after that to get that census qualified for the MLCC, so that they actually issue that license. So I think, based on what we've submitted and what I'm about to say, that this is a perfect use for your last quota license. In the city of St. Clair Shores itself, there are two licenses in escrow. One is under transfer right now, and one just went into escrow after they started this project. So there's nothing floating around out there that we know of that's available for them to purchase in the city. The ordinance, you know, has some highlights, and it talks about the people, talks about the site plan, it talks about what this would do to enhance the community and the surrounding area, and the surrounding businesses and surrounding neighborhoods, and it talks about the permanence of the facility, since these folks bought the real estate, they're here to stay, they have a long-term lease with themselves, but they're not going anywhere. And I think that once you hear what Doc's Grill is about, you'll think it's going to be a really cool concept for this particular area. Patty walked the streets in the neighborhood and knocked on every door she could to talk to the neighborhoods and neighbors on Benjamin and Maple, right? To talk to them about the concept, what they were bringing, and what kind of operators they were. So I think that that says volumes about these folks and about what they intend to do. So it's got a great menu, a really cool vibe, I'm sure you saw the renderings in your packet. Got a rooftop, very nice rooftop area, outdoor area, another outdoor area. They're really, you know, they're going to cater to families, date nights, corporate events, any kind of catering. Anthony's got a specific expertise in catering companies as well. They will be on board for that Memorial Day Parade next year, and they hope to be a real cog in that successful wheel that you have here in the city. They have EV charging stations at their facility, looking towards the future. They have lots of bike racks, so that Patty's neighbors can, you know, be encouraged to ride or walk back and forth to the restaurant. It's a multimillion-dollar project that they're in putting into the site and to the concept. We were also required to provide reference letters, which were all in your packet, and I have to say that the... These guys that are going to be the owners have quite the backup. Candace Miller wrote on behalf of two of the three, I'm sure you know, she doesn't need to be introduced. Patty has letters in the file from both James White, the current Detroit PD, and Jeff Craig, the former Detroit PD, and Tim Johnson, who she worked with at one of her healthcare agencies. And then also Anthony has a reference letter there from the mayor of Madison Heights, where he does business. So they have experience in the industry. Anthony, I think, has had, so they've been in Madison Heights, Royal, Chesterfield Township, Detroit, that about does it. All of their records are in here, they've got a very good record with Michigan liquor control as humans. Chuck Mancini is a longtime practitioner, legal lawyer in the city of Warren, and he is Anthony's dad, so it's a little bit of a family affair. Patty is a very close, confident, and family friend. And Anthony brings with him the experience in the restaurant business, and also Patty worked with the Delmar, which was their site in the city of Detroit until just recently. Patty is so well-known in her own right, between the nonprofit work that she has done, the work she's done for Mayor Duggan's office, for various Macomb County officials, and other nonprofit work. And so I think that you'll find that the people are very qualified. I do think that, I know it's hard when you only have one toy left in your toy box to give out, that it's not a slam dunk always, but I think that what they've done to this site and what they've decided to take on is really important, and I think these guys deserve a chance at getting a license from the city, for which they will be here for the long haul. They're not leasing, they're not people that are inexperienced, and we're certainly here to answer any questions that you have, and we are hoping that tonight you will approve the quota. Just one more note on the MLCC status, they're ready to pull the trigger up there in Lansing as soon as, if and when we get your approval, then they're ready to roll in Lansing so that they can continue on and make sure they have a license.
Okay. And before I turn to council for questions, Mr. Lent, you did go back and, I know I asked you to confirm that we had one left, just to make sure.
That is correct. So in 2000, I went back to 2013, at that point, we had five left. The very first one that was brought to council was Buffalo Wild Wings. At that point, they were approved, and then following Buffalo Wild Wings, Guy Dinos took one of the license. After that, the provider who was at the bank facility at her Blossom Heath had their own license, they took, they had their own license, so they took it with them when they left. So when Kosch came in, part of their contract was that the city would provide them with that liquor license. That license is still being used, no longer by Kosch, but it's being used by the city and Lakeland, who was the provider currently. And then the fourth one was given to the Hockey Association 2016, which was never subsequently used at the ICE Arena, which then ended up going to Detroit's Finest, which is now Brunch with Me, leaving us just with the one remaining, as we had just heard. Just to kind of give some information, we do have one quota remaining. As you all are aware, in your packet, the petitioner and the application did hit all of the ordinance requirements that is set by council. That ordinance requirement, I believe, changed in 2009, and they did hit all of the requirements. If the city was not to issue this ordinance or this liquor license, the petitioner would have to then go out and secure one and transfer it to this community, but right now, as they mentioned, they do hit every ordinance requirement.
Questions? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I think I remember actually voting against the one of those because it wasn't a big enough project and, I mean, it was a renovation, but wasn't, you know, a big investment in terms of the city, and this definitely is, in terms of, and as, back then, I remember arguing, it was one of the lots that was open that would be open to investment, and why we should be keeping a license available for that. So I think it's great that you're investing, and so I think it meets my own personal criteria for why I would grant it. But I do have a more of a business question, Mr. Mancini, I reached out to you earlier today for a question. In reading an article in the Free Press this last week, it was about a restaurant relief fund through the Small Business Association, and it listed several entities within St. Clair Shores that received federal relief funds in 2021. One of the oddities that showed up in there was 960,000 went to a home address on Jefferson, and turns out that was Charles Mancini's address. And it was in the name of Eat's Catering, and when I Googled Eat's Catering, didn't find anything about it, so I'm assuming it's an umbrella company for other entities, so could you just explain what other entities those are?
It's a company. It's a... It's a catering company, we do Chrysler Corporation, so we do the Warren Truck Plant and the Training Center that they have. So that's just where the check went. That's all it went to.
All right, but it's all like cafeteria and everything within those plants?
Oh, yeah, we do all the, we do the plants, yeah.
Got it, okay. Got it. Okay, okay.
And for the whole train, every person that goes through the UAW has to go to the Training Center. We feed them every day.
All right, great.
Can take you there if you want to see it.
Okay, cool. Thank you for that explanation. That's all.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So Patty, Anthony, you know, we were out there for the groundbreaking, and I love what you're doing over there. I guess my, my small concern is, when did you guys decide that you wanted the quota license? Because I was under the impression you guys were bringing a license with you. I know when we talked out there that morning, that you guys were bringing a license. When, when did you guys decide? Did you just find out we had one left and said, oh, let's go try and get it? Is that what happened?
Yeah, that's likely what happened, and Patty can chime in, of course. I do all the Mancini's work and have represented Patty and her companies before, and, and when they came to us, that's the first thing we attorneys look at. Does the municipality have one, and is it worth a try, based upon the language in your ordinance? And we thought it was worth a try, and so here we are.
Because, you know, sitting up here for almost 20 years, we've, we've been very hesitant to give these out, right? We did, we did hand out four over the last 10 years, so you can tell how long it ten, we've turned a lot of people down. And I, I love the fact that you're spending multimillions dollar, multimillion dollar program there, a couple million, whatever it is, and you're moving pretty fast. I just, I just worry that all the people that we turned down, you know, these, these things, as you give them away, the next one becomes even more valuable. Do you guys know what, what is a, what is a liquor license going for these days on the open market in Macomb County that you could actually bring over? Do you know how much they are?
I mean, I've seen listings from 45 to 95.
So 45 to 90, so that's really the value. And you guys would be paying how much for this to us?
Well, a quota license is, is merely.
Is nothing, right?
Yeah.
It's like a $2,500 background check or something like that, so.
I, I mean, I would like to mention that under the state law, if granted a quota license, this is not transferable for three years. So that, without showing undue hardship, which is constantly not defined in the liquor code. So this, this stays in your municipality.
No, I, I get all that. I'm not, I'm not worried about you guys leaving. I think you're going to have a thriving business there. I really think that what you've done, and you've figured out what the community needs, you're putting it in, you got the two terraces, it's, I think it's an awesome project. I just really worry that we are constantly trying to attract big projects, right? We're running out of space, but there's, there's a couple spots that are still available. I, I worry that without the hope of getting a liquor license, that maybe we wouldn't get looked at by some of these other projects. And, I mean, it sounds like you guys were ready to buy one and bring one in, and I, Patty, does that sound right? You guys, because I, when we talked, I, you know, what, what are you doing with the, oh, yeah, we're going to probably bring one. So I, I was totally blindsided by this. When I got the packet and said, what? We have a, they want one of our last license? It's like, wow.
I made the other, clear that up a little bit for me, maybe where the miscommunication came in.
Can you move the mic over, Patty, so we can hear?
Sure. I maybe, hopefully can, can help clear this up a little bit, but there was a restaurant that we closed in Detroit, but unfortunately, in the lease, that license had to go back to that landlord, and so it is back at the landlord. We couldn't take it, unfortunately. So that created this, you know, bigger issue for us and not having alcohol license for us to, to bring to St. Clair Shores. We had to give it back to Jim Pappas.
Got it. And do we know how many licenses are on, are in escrow or on the market right now in Macomb County? Or, and I, can you, is it just Macomb County you can transfer?
They're only transferable in Macomb. And then there are other kinds of licenses, resort licenses that would be transferable.
Right.
I don't know, but there are, there are many.
There are many?
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's probably, if I looked at the list right now, there'd probably be, now, if you look at the list, you don't know how many have transfers pending, so I don't have an exact number. So for example, the two licenses in the city that are in escrow, one has a transfer pending, and so you have to go back through that. But I, I mean, the answer, the honest answer is that if we have to find a license, we will. It, it's just that we feel, and I'm hoping that you will agree, that this project and these, these applicants deserve, deserve your last quota license. And chances are, you're going to get more in the future, and we're hopeful that, that that will, you know, swing the day.
Well, we haven't gotten any more in the last couple censuses, I know that, so.
No, no, we haven't. But this may be the, one of the largest projects, though. Of all the ones we have given out, this very well could be.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
Billion dollar amount.
That they probably deserve it. I just, I feel like, well, they've got one left, let's try and get it. You know, that, you know, based on our, 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 our talk. But, okay, let me, let me think about this a little bit, so.
Mr. Erie, then I'll go to you, Mr. Rabello.
All right. Should the city council make a motion to approve this, approval of this quota license, I would just ask that it be made subject to the agreement regarding issuance or transfer of Class C liquor license, which is a document requiring the liquor license to stay within the city, indicating that it cannot be transferred outside of the city. And I would note that the petitioner has already executed that document, and it is a part of their, of their submission, but I would just like to make sure that it is identified as a condition. Thank you.
Mr. Rabello.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is a tough one. First of all, let me say, everybody's looking forward to what you guys are doing there. Your plan looks great, the building looks great, the expediency is great, the expedienty, and it's wonderful that you picked St. Clair Shores to do that. You guys look like you're hardworking people, that's for sure. The, the problem I have with this is originally, we had, I'm not sure how many we had at one time, 15 of them or something like that, back about 15 years ago. So it came up that there was plenty of smaller businesses in St. Clair Shores. This is how this whole thing was originally conceived. It was conceived for the smaller businesses that didn't have, I believe at that time was 225 seats in there, okay, which left probably 95% of St. Clair Shores taverns, bars, restaurants, without the ability to come back and get one of these, okay? Because they were over, they were way under the quota of 225 seats, okay? So we lowered it down, and we gave, I'm sure, I think we gave about three away. And these were for smaller businesses. So I believe the seating might have been changed one more time down lower, okay?
A hundred.
It's a hundred now, okay? Which still, there's plenty of people that don't have 100 seats. So this is how, I, I, I think I originally did this, and that's where I sit right now as, at, for the smaller businesses. That's what I was trying to entice when I did this in the first place. Do you, do you understand what I was doing?
I do.
I was using it to get smaller businesses to be able to have tavern and beer license, which we ended up doing. So I am going to be a no on this, and I hope you understand why. There's other folks out there. It's not really even about just having one left, but it wasn't what I originally perceived it as. So, and listen, you, you guys are going to do great on the nautical mile. Thank you for picking the, the nautical mile to do this. And I sure can understand why somebody would vote yes to give this to you, too, because of the amount of work you put into it. But it's not how I originally conceived it for smaller, smaller seating places. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Rusi.
Well, I guess to that point, the current ordinance says you have to have a minimum 100 people seating, or if you don't, there's other conditions. But the top one listed in the ordinance, really, is the first one in H2A would be the city holds more than six unissued quota licenses, which doesn't apply because we only are holding one unissued quota license. So even under the current ordinance, as it's written, we could not give it to a less than 100-seater because we're not holding enough licenses. So without changing the ordinance, you can't give it to a smaller business anyway.
Got you.
But I appreciate the points raised by, and the concerns raised by Councilman Frederick. He was talking, and I was nodding along about some of just the concerns of, this did, I, I think I used the word blindsided, too, when I was talking to someone, when you get the, the packet, and it's like, oh, I didn't recall that being brought during the site plan or anywhere before, that you guys would be applying for our last license. So that was kind of surprising to me to see that, too. That was, I, I think I used the word blindsided. Usually, we hear about these things just, you know, one-on-one prior to it coming before us to see, given that this is something we do have, we can decide to or not to, we do have flexibility on to see where our temperature is, because I think we do have different, all of us up here, I have varying philosophies about what these are for. I'm fine with giving them out to people who apply, but I was surprised to see this one, too, just given that I never heard that this was even being contemplated as part of this development. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will be in favor of it. You know, I remember sitting here, I think the gourmet house goes back at least 15 years, maybe. It's been vacant, something to that effect. Yeah, more than that. And then before, before we even got the building down, there was pigeons. It, it was a disaster in the whole area, and we finally fought them to get that thing put down. I mean, it's been a long time, and if I sit back here and think, my gosh, back then, we, we would have died to have Mr. Mancini and Patty come here and build a multimillion dollar facility on, on that property. And it's finally come. Yeah, it's taken quite a while. Not, not because of you, but it's just taken a long time to get there. And again, as I said, when Mr. Karen was speaking, I don't, I don't think we've given one away with this much investment. It's close, it could be close with Buffalo Wild Wings, but this has got to be the, the biggest investment right there that we've provided one. So I commend it. And you've extended the nautical mile, like, which is great. I mean, I think actually Blue Goose has helped extend that, and so has Brunch With Me. We keep trying to get that whole Jefferson and going all the way down, which is fantastic. And so I, I think it's just a, a great asset to the city. I'm happy to see that, the area develop, not just have ruts in it the day after St. Patrick's Day, because that's what has happened for years.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah. Well, let me just say this. I mean, I kind of feel like something that Dave said, that, you know, he would understand why someone would vote for this. I would understand why someone would vote against this. I will probably be, I will be for it. But I have to say, compliment to my colleagues up here, this is a pretty shrewd council that they've picked up on this. The idea of kind of swooping in and getting the last license on this, and I don't think we heard anything about that until now. So, that having been said, I would also say that if we had, if you hadn't needed to come to us for a license, and you'd said, well, you know, we'll build a brand-new restaurant that's two stories tall with outdoor seating and from scratch, and basically take up a piece of land that hasn't been doing anything for a long, long time, if you'll give us a liquor license, then we probably would have agreed to it. So with that, I will make a motion to grant the liquor license.
And along with?
Along with the conditions expressed by Mr. Erie regarding keeping that liquor license in the city.
Support. Support by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Karen. Other questions? Roll call vote. Kendra, please. It was moved by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Karen, to approve the Quota C license for 25225 Jefferson Avenue.
Councilmember Vitale?
Aye.
Councilmember Karen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Frederick?
No.
Councilmember Rabello?
No.
Councilmember Rusi?
Aye.
Mayor Walbe?
Aye. Passes five to two. So congratulations with that. And can you give us some a little more timing, Patty or Anthony, on that? I mean, it, it's sure moving very well.
We'll be open in September.
Really?
Yeah. So we're ready, we're ready to go. We'll be ready for the fall.
Okay.
So, I mean, as soon as we got granted, we went with our architect, and we haven't stopped.
We appreciate it. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you guys so much.
You're the talk of the town right now, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, you guys.
Item seven, planning case. Request for site plan approval for a new gas station with the parking lot of the existing Kroger at 206609 Mile. We have the representative from Kroger?
Yes.
Jason Canvaser, is that you?
That's me.
How are you?
Hey, father. Jason Canvaser with the Clark Hill Law Firm here on behalf of Kroger. A number of Kroger representatives here as well, if I could introduce them real quick.
Okay.
I have, I guess, starting at the end here, I have Matthew Pisco. He's from Seven Multi Site Solutions. He's the operations director. He's helped design this project. Next to him is Garrett Foley. He is the construction manager from Kroger. I have Ken Kasporsky. He's the Kroger Division Asset Protection Manager. Next to him is Caleb Stevens, who is the fuel manager. And then next to him is Malachi Mosley, who is the project manager.
I know you've been here before regarding it, but give us an overview again, what you want to do.
Well, thank you. We're here tonight to ask that the city council approve the site plan for the vacant parcel at 9 Mile and Harper. This is the vacant lot. It's, there's nothing there right now. I think last time I was there, there was a bunch of hay. It's, front's 9 Mile, if I'm getting my directions correctly. Now you're going to really try my east, west, and north. I think it's north of the Shell gas station, but I, I could.
West.
Not good at directions. I got lots coming here. Kroger's been a vital member of the community, and they have really put a lot into St. Clair Shores. In fact, as you all know, in 2021, they opened up a, I think it was a $30 million store renovation. They're looking to put another $2.5 million into the city in terms of putting a fuel kiosk. And Kroger has, many of their stores throughout the state of Michigan, they have 119 stores in the state, many of those stores have fuel kiosks as a convenience to their customers. This fuel kiosk will have nine pumps, so it can serve 18 cars at one time, or I guess we should say cars and boats, because unlike a lot of other gas stations in the city, there will be unleaded, there will be diesel, there will also be ethanol-free gas for boats and watercraft, which unlike the Shell, and I know that's going to be a point of discussion at some point, but unlike the Shell, that is, is not an offering at, at that location. The Kroger fuel kiosk, in addition to serving the fuel products, will have a walk-up stand. Customers will not be able to physically go into it, but there'll be a walk-up window with some limited items, cigarettes, tobacco, Lotto, candy, soft drinks, and drinks. So you fill up your car, you can go get a pop, or you fill up your boat, you get a, you know, your pack of cigarettes before you, you head out onto the water, whatever you might need. The planning commission has approved this project, and I, I know you have the planning.
We do.
Memo, so I'm not going to go through all 24 points, but I do want to emphasize the fact that when we're talking about vehicular traffic, there will be no new curb cuts. We don't believe that traffic will be drastically impacted. In fact, from what we know from our other stores and doing this at other locations, most of the customers come and they, and they do multiple things when they come to Kroger. They use their fuel points to get gas, they go in the store to get their groceries. They may come to get gas, but we don't see a material increase of just customers coming to get, get gas. You know, Kroger, again, has put a lot into this community. They, they, they really strive to be vital members of the community, and fast, they're kicking off their summer no-hunger campaign with Greeners tomorrow, if any of you are available, 10 o'clock. They have about 1,000 peaches that they're looking for a nonprofit as part of the city to make sure that they get those, too. So we, we hope, we see some of you out there, and if you need your information, just let us know, we'll get that.
Sure.
But in terms of, of the Kroger score, Kroger has implemented a number of security measures throughout the years. Having a safe store is of the utmost importance to Kroger. And we don't believe having a fuel kiosk is going to make any changes or change the level of security. When you walk into a Kroger store, there are a number of barriers to make sure that carts can't be easily removed if somebody is trying to commit a theft. There is a security guard by the front door. They've added another security guard as well. Kroger has hired these personnel who monitor the premises, and they're there as a visual deterrent. They're not there to physically interact and potentially escalate at what could be a dangerous situation. They're supposed to be a physical deterrent. That's one of many physical visual deterrents. You see the, the monitor system, the blue light system in the parking lot, which studies have shown it is a drastic. shown it is a drastic decrease to crimes in the parking lot. They've added other cameras throughout the store to help monitor and protect safety of customers. There's a number of non-visual things in any Kroger store, and a lot of them are proprietary, so that Kroger can protect customers, so that the customers know that they're not being protected. It may be as simple as a spider-type web tracking on a certain product, or maybe some kind of sensor, and there's a whole lot of other things here, and we're happy to get into security measures if you'd like to hear from our asset protection manager. Kroger staff members undergo a thorough training and de-escalation techniques to be able to handle difficult situations effectively. The security team routinely reevaluates and looks for enhancements that are good or potential opportunities at the store, as they like to call them, to help protect vulnerabilities. And they're always looking for preventative measures. And then when we're looking at this site plan specifically, we don't believe that the site design itself will in any way unduly create any kind of harmful impact on the community or on the property owners. I mean, if we go around here, just coming in here off the freeway up 11 Mile, there's competing businesses all over the city. Convenience stores on four corners, gas stations on corners, restaurants next to each other. So I understand that there is a level of concern in terms of how is this going to impact our neighboring businesses, but between the larger turning radiuses, the boats, the watercraft, we don't believe it will have a material impact, and we think it'll be a benefit to the community and Kroger's customers. And myself and my team is happy to answer any specific questions you or anybody else may have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Just, I'll turn it to the council, but just to take a little issue, I guess, I mean, I live in the area, I live on Edgewich Street, which is really right across the street there, west of, east of the, on Harper there. And so I'm on Nine Mile quite often, and I mean, it's already busy, backs up consistently past the ingress and egress of Kroger there on Nine Mile Road, so I mean, and that's without the gas station. So I actually think the gas station will drive a lot of traffic there and then drive it on Nine Mile Road, but I, I mean, I'm there every day, so, in that area, so I'm quite familiar with it. But with that, Mr. Karen, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. So was it Jason?
Yes.
Jason, so my concern is kind of what was mentioned by Alexander, right, Andrew, when he was up here talking, and the amount of traffic that's at Nine Mile and Harper at any given time, and it's, it's across the board. I mean, it's, there is a lot of traffic. I mean, just tonight, I was coming west on Nine Mile, and I pulled into Kroger to pick up some bananas and coffee for my mother, and it was hard to get into the left-turn lane to turn into the farthest driveway at Kroger, which would be probably the number one driveway for this gas station, for this, for this fuel facility. Have you guys ever done a traffic study at all for this, for this area?
I'd have to turn to the team to see if they've done a specific traffic study. I mean, we, maybe we'll talk about customer counts in terms of the store, but...
Do you guys know how many vehicles would be generated on a, on a particular day for that?
I think at the end, you'd need a study, really, to indicate, to tell that.
Yeah, I mean, he's going to give me an idea, but I, at the end of the day, I think we really, we really should have something.
Matthew Pisco, through the chair, if I may. 60% of our traffic historically comes from trips generated for the store. So the other trips are either on the road, we have not done official traffic study, but we have official counts from historical transactions between existing stores and fuel kiosks. So we are aware of that initial impact is an existing trip to the grocery store.
But there's no traffic study for this particular location?
That is correct.
Is there a reason why you guys didn't do that?
It wasn't mandated through the ordinance. We went through several hearings, and it was never requested. Just on, on the sheer volume of traffic that is generated from the store, it's not, the addition, we're counter cyclical to a traditional gas station. We're not to go get coffee in the morning, we're not get packed cigarettes on the way home, we're go to the grocery store, shop, get your fuel. So we're a completely different model than a traditional petroleum marketer. So that, we rely on a lot of good historical background and its impact. The worst thing that could happen to us is that we overcrow out our parking lot and make it difficult for our customers. So we're cognizant of that.
I can tell you right now, there's, there's no way that somebody can get out of that gas station at the eastern most driveway onto Nine Mile. Impossible, impossible. People can't even get out of the Shell station right now, right, when there's, when there's that much traffic right there. But I, I really think we need, we need some kind of a study, somebody to take a serious look at this. I'm worried, did you guys talk to the county at all? I mean, Harper's a county road. Did you guys have any conversations with them about what's happening on Harper? And the light, and the, and the light with the turns and...
Through the chair, we did not, but any use that would go there is going to generate traffic. Our claim is, we're going to generate less traffic than a standalone business, because our traffic is coming...
Like what kind, what kind of standalone business are you talking about?
The bagel place that was proposed to go there, that would be a morning generator, coffee, lines, queues, another restaurant perhaps, I mean, there are other uses. Something, the highest and best use of that property, something's going to go there, and it's going to generate traffic. We're saying, we're going to generate traffic. We want a vibrant business. Most of it's going to come from our existing parking lot.
You know, this is one of our busiest intersections in the city, if not the busiest. I mean, if it's not the busiest, it's number two. And I don't know how everybody else here feels, but I would really love to see a, I would, I would like to move to table this thing, and, and subject to a traffic study provided by you all, so that we can see what, what the impact is going to be.
Support, Ron. Well, I mean, Mr. Vitale's pencil, oh, I'm sorry. So when there is a table, a motion and a second, right, there's no further discussion, so Mr. Vitale still pencils up, so I think he wants to be heard, so I guess I would ask you to hang, hang on.
I'll hold off on that, subject to Mr. Vitale.
Mr. Vitale?
Okay. I'll raise a, I'll raise a couple of points here. You know, first of all, you should know that I am a Kroger Points customer, I use them frequently. I don't think I've paid full price for a gallon of gas in the last four years. That having been said, my wife buys groceries at that Nine Mile Kroger store, but we never go for gas there, obviously, because it doesn't exist. Actually find it a lot more convenient to go to your location on Grashit. So I guess we're part of that supposed 40% that would be making a special trip to go there. The, the other thing I would bring up, too, is that there are times when Nine Mile Road or when more aptly, Harper Avenue becomes an alternate, when there's an accident or something like that on 994, and that traffic really gets heavy. So if there's any kind of a traffic study, I think we should also, you know, prepare for that possibility. We've had times the freeway has been closed for construction and had traffic routed onto Harper. So that would really make an issue there. And actually, entirely separate from the gas station debate, and having no bearing on my vote, but you did choose to bring it up, were the security concerns and shoplifting at the store, that really, to me, doesn't much impact the gas station unless there was, I suppose, some sort of a chase situation. But you just revealed to everyone here that your security guards are there for deterrence, they don't stop anyone. And I'll tell you this, I did, used to work retail, 17-year-old me used to work at the Kmart at 15 Mile and Grocebeck, and myself, along with other people, when they said, "Caroline, to the front desk," we were expected to go and stop shoplifters. And I'm not aware of any changes to Michigan law that says shoplifters can't be stopped. I know companies don't want to get sued, but there's no change in the law. So that's your own internal policy, and, and I'll tell you, this has nothing to do with gas station, but you did raise the issue, and it is a concerning issue, separate from the gas station, so...
I understand that we have our asset protection manager here who can, who can address that directly.
He doesn't need to. It has nothing to do with this, but you did raise the point.
Yeah, let's try to stay on the...
So I would then make a motion to table this, and move, waiting for a traffic study.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Frederick to table with the request to get a traffic study done and presented to the body.
Is there a timeframe? Do we need a timeframe on that?
Yeah, 60 days would be good.
60 days? I'm good with that, you go with that.
Yes, 60 days.
60 days.
Through the chair, we've got the 4th of July near, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, so...
You want 90?
If we can appear earlier, as soon as we get it done, we'd like to present...
We have one meeting, we have July, we have July 15th, which is not, I'm sure, can't be done, and then you...
No, we can't fly the date.
Then you have an August 19th date, or, or a September 3rd date?
I would say by September 3rd.
Okay, so the...
Table till September 3rd?
3rd is by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Frederick, and then to get that traffic study to the city. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one passes. Item eight, request to amend the sign ordinance, section 30-5B for rotating cylinders. I know this was presented to us, actually by Mr. Karen, and Mr. Karen, do you want a couple of comments, or...
Yeah, sure. Yeah, this is, you know, I brought this issue up a couple of meetings ago, that certain type of signs were starting to come back into popularity around the city, that based our ordinance would not allow. So based on some advice from council members and from Bob, I did put together, basically to write a exception into the ordinance, which we have a couple of other exceptions that are already there, to basically allow signs that have rotating cylinders would be allowed within the city, and they could be exterior-mounted signs with rotating cylinders shall be permitted, provided the following conditions are met, the sign dimensions are limited to four feet in height and eight inches in width, two or fewer rotating cylinders shall be permitted per street frontage, and the area should not be included within the maximum sign area permitted on the site. And basically threw that one in there, so we didn't have to worry about calculating the area of a cylinder in the definition what a sign is, so...
And then that area and that volume, right.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, so I request council to consider adopting it, and basically, we've got about six businesses right now that do have these type of signs that are up, and by basically passing this, this means that CDI doesn't have to go after those businesses, that tell them to stop rotating.
All right. Thank you. Their questions. Mr. Rubello.
No, I know we brought this up, and first of all, I am for this, I just wanted to get some clarification. We're generally used to seeing barber shops, I think that was what, what came up before. But can any business, no matter what type, put these on the wall? If it, I'm just picking something up. If it was a party store, can they have a rotating, I'm just making this up, can they have a rotating Pepsi-Cola can on it?
According to the proposed language, they can have a rotating cylinder. Yes, so any business, does not need to be a barber shop, there are no color obligations in this.
Okay, I'm good.
Miss, any other question? I thought so. Mr. Vitale?
I was going to do a little quick math there to compute the cylinder as proposed, four inches by, eight inches, excuse me, eight inches by four feet in height. You know, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with this if we were, and I don't know if this can be done through motion, but to grandfather in those barber shops in terms of sign square footage and not impacting it, but going forward, I don't think it's too much of a hardship to have that be calculated in their overall sign area, and that might even address some of the other concerns that maybe this doesn't just get used for barber shops, it becomes rotating Pepsi cans, et cetera, that they know that that's part of their sign area. So I, I wouldn't want to do it for the existing shops, I think, you know, making them go back and change their signage would be ridiculous, but I think anybody going forward who would want to do one of these, I don't think it's that much of a, I almost calculated that area up here, so, I don't know, I think I would like to see an amendment made to it.
Mr. Erie, beforehand?
What I was going to say is, without thinking this through thoroughly at this exact moment, I'm 95% sure that our opinion would be that any rotating barber pole sign, if you will, that pre-existed our, our sign ordinance is already grandfathered in.
Ms. Rusi?
I see, in terms of the grandfatherance test, though, I mean, at what point are we considering prior to the ordinance? Because I think the ones Councilman Karen had brought up were after the ordinances were in existence, correct? I, yeah.
They would not be grandfathered in, then.
Yeah, so I'm, as the author of the ordinance, John has his pens up, so I will allow him the floor, if that's okay, to speak. I was just going to, to, I guess, respond to the amendment request.
Okay, I'll turn it over to him then.
Yeah.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, in terms of the, the area calculating, because I was just considering of not having the entire cylinder inside of it be a part of the whole area, but if it's more amenable that the, you know, the, the flat area of the height and width, that's very easy to calculate, is included as part of the sign limitation?
Yeah, that's what I had in mind.
Yeah, we could strike that last line, knowing that that's the interpretation, and that staff doesn't have to calculate the area of the cylinder, and just the flat area in the front of the business.
That's all I had in mind.
Okay.
And, I don't have the floor, so...
Because I guess, Bob is, would that suffice, you know, in terms of, you know, staff just knowing how that would be calculated, or do we have to spud it out?
Well, I don't think it, I don't think it clarifies exactly what portion of the cylinder would be calculated. If I understood what you said, you're talking about eight inches, if it were maximum, eight inches by four feet would be counted.
Correct.
But not the area of the rotating cylinder itself.
Correct.
I think we should probably clarify that somehow.
So how would you clarify that?
That the, the width, the width times the height would be considered, would be included within the maximum sign area permitted on the site. So I would just change, cede to say, the width times the height shall be included within the maximum sign area permitted on the site. And as long as we're making a couple of changes under section, or letter B, rather than two or less, I would recommend...
Oh, we already changed that to two or fewer.
Yeah.
Candace texted me earlier.
I was going to make it a little different, but that's...
What were you going to make it?
No more than two rotating cylinders shall be permitted.
There you go.
Is what I was going to say.
That sounds simple.
However, the other recommendation is, certainly accomplishes the same thing.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. I get the impression we're really overthinking this. What?
Hey, don't worry, Matt, you can add it on the fly.
All right. There you go, Matt. So is there a reason why we can't just make this for barber shops? Is there a reason why we can't just say, hey, if you're a barber shop, you can have one of these, not to exceed two, and whatever?
Without getting too detailed, there is a reason, yes.
Well, let's hear it.
Okay.
This has got to be good, Bob.
I think that we don't want to necessarily carve out an exception for a particular type of business, which would potentially cause other types of businesses to say, well, I want my own exception as well. There is an argument against what I just said, but without getting into that argument or that, that opposition, I think that we run into a more likely problem than not if we make this a barber pole as opposed to... likely problem than not if we make this a barber pole as opposed to simply a rotating cylinder sign.
I guess I'm more worried about, to Mr. Rabello's point, you know, 25 party stores come up and say, hey, I want my Pepsi rotating can in front of my store, I mean, I worry more about that than, you know, the, how many, where did John go, how many barber shops do we have in town now?
Six.
Six? And, you know, traditionally, this has been something, you know, forever, that's been in, I don't know, how far back does it go? Probably goes back to the Old West, right?
Middle Ages.
Yeah, oh, Middle Ages. All right, so I guess if there's a way that we can just make this simpler and make it for barbers, or.
Doesn't, it doesn't appear that way.
I guess not.
This ordinance does not specifically state that lettering is permitted, but it doesn't prohibit it either on the cylinder.
Okay, so should we prohibit it?
Can't.
Yeah, because it's content.
Yeah.
Got it.
Ms. Rusi?
All right, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, going back to defining who is the speaker, I mean, that would, I think, open up a whole can of First Amendment issues, if you start granting the right to speech to certain speakers over certain speakers. Oh, if you're a barber shop, you can, but if you're a pet store, you can't. You know, we are dealing with a post Reed versus Gilbert world in terms of, of how the courts define sign ordinances, and the more exemptions you start carving out, the more, I mean, that, that case basically says you can't distinguish a garage sale sign from a sign that says anything else, you can't look at content. So if you start looking at content, if you like the colors, that's why when John had, John's original proposal included mandating red, white, and blue as the colors, once we start mandating content, once we start mandating who can speak, who can't, that's when we start, I think, entering upon really potentially violating First Amendment rights, especially as the courts look at now post the Gilbert versus Reed case. So, you know, I think what John has makes a lot of sense in terms of defining it by things that the courts are always had said were acceptable realms for regulation, mechanics, size, placement, things like that, but once you start looking at who's speaking and their identity determines whether or not they're allowed the certain speech, or what colors, or the contents of the speeches, a Pepsi can, that's when you start, I think, opening up the say to a lawsuit, and worse, violating people's rights, which is worse, because we shouldn't be depending upon recognizing people's known rights by whether or not they're going to bring a lawsuit. So I, I think what John has, I do agree we're overcomplicating this, I think what John has is fine with the changes that I had tested him, such as taking out the second width in here, and the two were lost because it can be quantified, it should be fewer, those type of things, but we really have to tread lightly when we start curving out exemptions, especially given the considerations after this court case, which was a Supreme Court case, and there's all sorts of things actually with their ordinance that we still need to look at, even looking at the existing right now 30-5-4, which we carve out, time, temperature, and stock market signs, which that's content. If we're looking at science, say if it shows time or not, if we're looking at a sign that says temperature or not, or stock market quotes or something. So, you know, even within the ordinance we are amending at this point, there are problematic elements to it, I don't think we need to go about adding more of them. So I think John's proposal addresses things we can regulate unquestionably, and that's mechanics, placement, size, things of that nature, versus mandating who can speak and what they can speak.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale?
Okay, one, I get, one thing I didn't understand, and maybe City Attorney can explain this to me, is that if we were to exempt the existing barber poles from having the sign area calculation, how would that not be a grandfathering in, and why wouldn't that work? I mean, the goal there is just to not make everyone who has a barber pole have to recalculate their sign area, but anyone going forward from this moment when it passes would have to have that included. Why can't that be done?
I don't think we are, I hope I understood your question correctly, but I don't think we are exempting the existing sign poles. I think that's the problem, that if they were created or put in place after the existence of our sign ordinance, they're not legal. This ordinance would.
Would we not be making them legal by doing this?
Yes, that's the point of doing it, I think.
I understand, it's, it's not legal now.
Right.
Okay, so what we have now becomes legal under this ordinance, anything new that pulls a permit after this has to include it in part of their sign calculation.
The.
How do we do that?
It would be, it would be in the ordinance. I mean, it's, I think that we're gonna add the language if we haven't already.
I mean, if our goal is that we want to allow this for the barber shops, not really getting into content, but that's what has it existing now. If we want to allow that, I'm not opposed to it. I don't want rotating Pepsi cans on every party store, and I think the disincentive to doing that, without getting into content, is saying that it will be, because you're going to purchase this thing now, okay? You're going to buy this, you're gonna submit the plan for it now. You don't already have it, as of this moment, and going forward, you would have to include that in your sign calculation.
Yes, the four, the eight inches by 48 inches.
Okay, so is that three square feet, something like that?
It's, roughly.
Okay, so we'll just forsake our argument, call it three square feet.
Right.
And if they do two, it would be six square feet, right?
Right, no.
So.
No, if it's, it's four feet high, 48 inches high, if it's 24 inches high, two feet, then it would only be.
All right, well, the point is, how do we make it work so that whoever had, whatever barbers have the pole right now, don't have to go back in front of SignArb or anything like that? And anyone that decides to get one, anyone who opens a new barber shop, or wants to put one on their business, has to have it included in their square footage calculation. I think that would disincentivize too many motion signs in the city.
The answer to that specific question is there is no way. If they don't go to SignArb, I mean, anybody that has a non-grandfathered in sign can go to SignArb and try to get a, an exemption.
So you're saying that because this ordinance would be changed, if they went to SignArb?
They won't have to go to SignArb if this is changed.
Well.
It's taking what this ordinance is.
Back and forth on this, I'm gonna have to be against it then, because I don't want an epidemic of motion signs in the city.
Since there is no content limitation on what's on the rotating cylinder, there, I think it's fair to say that there, there may be some businesses that do put, I don't know if it's gonna be a Pepsi.
And then I don't see how, if you allow this, then I don't see how you say that you don't have motion through other means, electronic.
Well, we already do, well, we, when you say motion.
Okay, what if I make an LED, if I buy a flat screen, and I make it show rotation? How do I say that's, that's, why should it have to be mechanical?
Well, because it's not a rotating cylinder, it's a picture of one. Would be my.
I'm sorry, I guess I, the barbers can keep their poles, they'll just have to make them not spin, at least in terms of my vote.
Mr. Rabello?
Okay, I just, I just want to get this straight, because this stuff, when you don't think it pops up, it pops up. So if somebody has a grand opening, now I've seen them put signs in the ground, that's been, okay? Are those okay? I don't care if they are, I, I would say let them do it, that's how I am. And the second thing is the square, the square footage of the signs, is that gonna go against how much signage that they're allowed on the building?
Answer to your second question is yes. The ordinance with respect to the rotating cylinder, I don't think that it requires, that the ordinance addresses, well, yes, it does.
Wall mounted.
It indicates that it has to be exterior, and it has to be wall mounted.
Okay.
Could not be sitting on the ground.
There's, you know.
So it can't be planted in the town?
You can have a temporary, temporary permit.
Our audience is getting smaller, Mr. Bear.
Lost the voice counts. I was gonna talk about bloodletting.
Yeah, no, it has to be, it's a wall mounted sign.
We can do a temporary permit.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Karen?
All right, so did make a couple of changes, right? So the area width, width times height shall be included in the maximum sign area permitted on the site. For any of the barber shops I've seen, basically the signings they have is on windows currently today, which, you know, is a different area calculation, none of them have a big frontage sign as it is, so I think they're all gonna be fine there. And the whole thing is, is that it's, they're technically not supposed to have them today, so don't want to have to go around and tell them they have to turn them off, when it's, a lot of them are already invested in it, in that, so, and, and there are starting to pop, you know, they're starting to pop around in other cities as well. I just happened to be in Warren the other day, and it's like, oh, two more in the business over there. So it's like, something that's just coming back, this is just meant to make it allowable again. You know, going back to that, my dad having to turn his off in the 70s, you know, because people couldn't think of a way just to make an ordinance work. So with that, as the change is up there, I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Karen to add then the change B to no more than two rotating cylinders shall be permitted per, per street footage, and then the area width times height shall be included within the maximum sign area permitted on the site. That, that motion is made by Mr. Karen. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rabello. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one, it passes. Thank you. Item 9, request approval of the lease agreement with St. Lucy's Church, the Archdiocese of Detroit for the St. Lucy's School for temporary location. The police department fired up department administration during the reconstruction of the existing facilities. Mr. Lent?
As was on our previous action on May, March, sorry, March 18th, City Council approved the letter of understanding for the lease with St. Lucy's. This has now been back in front of St. Lucy's and approved, it has went to legal, and it has been reviewed. Some of the key spots here is it is set up as an 18-month lease with a total of $171,000 is accounted for in the project. One other thing to note here as well is St. Lucy's will allow us to go in and start making some, getting some contractors in, starting to look at it, and then also start making the improvements, and the lease will not start until we actually move in. So once we have a move-in date confirmed, they will allow us to put the date in at that time, and the lease is kind of in your packet.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. First off, question for Bob, I know the answer is, I wanted to confirm, back when I was associate at the law firm, 2007 to 2010, so quite a long time ago, I did work on a few files for a client in the firm, which was yours, Daisies. I'm still okay to talk and vote on this, correct? I haven't had worked with them since 2010.
Yes, thank you for asking that, but no, there's no probation on you voting.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions. The letter of understanding that we initially approved back in March was for 12 months, this is for 18, what was the driver of the increase?
In order to, with St. Lucy's, when we originally said 12, right now the anticipated construction projects, that when we met with our construction, we'll say in 16 months, we originally were just gonna go to our sizes, ask for 12, then ask for an extension, which we have a better firm understanding, are we gonna need? So at that point, it was stated, let's go for 18, get it approved, so we're not negotiating a new contract, knowing that 18 will get us through the entire construction, we don't have to go back and get it amended.
Right, and there's also in here, if we continue to occupy lease premises longer than 18 months, on the first day of the 19th month, the rent will be increased 150% of the previous rent amount, all other terms of lease remain the same, so even if we exceed 18, there's no new negotiation, we just have to pay 150 times, I guess, the previous rent amount.
So when that was stated, that's why we wanted to try to make it to get the 18 instead of the 12.
Okay, so just so everyone's clear, 18, and if we go beyond that, there's, it's addressed, and here what that is, and it's more than what this current thing is. Question on page 6, and this is another one I think I know the answer to. There is a footnote that says NTD, which I assume is need to discuss, and it says NTD to discuss with client whether security improvements are required by landlord or required by tenant. Is that planned by our attorney or their attorney?
Their attorney.
Microphone.
Sorry.
Their attorney.
Do you know if those discussions have occurred?
I do not.
It's pretty sloppy to leave that in there, because that sounds like an internal note to their client, which they themselves discuss with their client, but that's in here. So is everything else like, not draft? Because that's still a draft footnote.
Yeah, it does appear that it would be a draft. I would say that the final document should have that deleted.
Yeah, that's pretty bad. Another thing I found surprising in here was section 45 about attorney's fees. If landlord uses the services of an attorney in connection with, and there are a few things, so if landlord uses the services of an attorney in connection with any action brought by tenant against landlord, tenant shall reimburse landlord upon demand for any and all attorney's fees, expenses so incurred by landlord. So if we sue them, they only, we only even have to lose the suit, they, we, they get their attorney fees paid by us. That's pretty crazy, why would we agree to that?
Well, I don't know how badly we needed the property in this.
Oh, that's a bad.
That's a very.
We'd agree to anything. I mean, that's a bad term for us, and there, if we, it ties our hands to bringing into our dispute against them, because we, no matter if we prevail on it, we're agreeing to pay their attorney fees to defend them against us. That's weird.
It, it does have conditions on it, though, you know, if the landlord uses the services of an attorney.
Of a, yeah, of an attorney. I don't think, I think if we sue them, they'll be using the services of an attorney.
But it has to be connected with a breach or default in the performance of any of the provisions of this lease.
No, that's, that's actually one, any breach or default in the performance, it says, or two, any action brought by tenant against landlord. So that's a whole separate clause from the breach or default one. So that is, any action brought by tenant against landlord is a separate clause from the any breach or default. So if landlord uses the service of an attorney in connection with any action brought by tenant against landlord, tenant shall reimburse landlord upon demand for any and all attorney fees and expenses so incurred by landlord. So that's not even about, I mean, I assume it'd be about breach or default, but who knows? I mean, that, it's just any action, so that's really broad in terms of not protecting us. And then in 47, we are waiving the right to jury if we do trial by jury in the event of any litigation, which is further kind of, I don't know, I mean, you obviously hope that any relationship you enter works out great, and you never, ever, ever have to use these terms. That said, we contract because we know it's a possibility, no matter how slight, to protect ourselves, and it doesn't sound like we're doing that here with the attorney fees. I don't know. You hope it doesn't evolve into that, but people get married hoping they never have to get divorced. They enter two agreements just in case, right? So I'm just saying, that's kind of, I, I don't foresee any issues, but whoever foresees issues when you enter to a contract with somebody, you hope. But anyway, that's kind of, that 45 is kind of a very friendly clause to the other side, and not so much to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Erie?
I was just gonna say, if council wishes, we can attempt to negotiate that.
Think we should.
I don't know, we really want the property. I just, it's that, that just jumped out to me as something that, I don't know how they got that in there, but that was some good negotiating on their part. Not so much on ours.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. So just, I know I raised a few different times at the last meeting, the, getting an update on the progress of where we're at. Since then, I've gotten basically drawings that show that we're at 95% design complete, but we've gotten no financials yet. I don't know if we've had any updates on the fire building yet, so just, where are we at on timeline, and, or can we at least get a timeline?
Yep. So Fire has a meeting coming up this Wednesday. They are at the 95% DD drawings as well. Actually, I believe Fire is now at 100% as of today. Is that 100%? I believe Police will be at 100% by the end of this week. Cunningham and Lemp, we're gonna take the 100%. Cunningham and Lemp, we're gonna take the hundred percent DD drawings. And they're supposed to have to meet by the end of this month, um, the new cost estimates based off of the DD drawings. So by the end of June, uh, beginning of July, we should have those numbers. We'll be able to present them in that council and produce them to the individual work study groups, uh, first, and then they'll come before council. And then, once we get the DD drawings, then they'll start the construction.
So you, you expect them to come in the July or August meeting?
I think in July, numbers, we are gonna be very close. They'll be able to have a presentation to council, um, barring any other, if we have any setbacks. I know there are a few ancillary things. We're still working with DTE, uh, Police Department. I can tell you, it's with the Transformers. Uh, we have three Transformers that are outside of the Police Department that feed the City Hall, feed the court, um, and feed the Police Department building. Those are currently our Transformers, not DTEs. In order to switch over to DTE's Transformers, it would require a lot of work. So we're working through all the logistics because that deals a little bit with the timeline and how the power comes in, um, as well as the generator, which is one of the larger costs as well. Um, so that, that process is one of the bigger ones playing out, um, which has slowed the Police Department down a little bit. Fire Department has actually caught up with the Police Department. And like I said, they're ready to have their meeting and have the DD drawings.
No later than August?
No, no later than August.
Well, no later than August, it means mid-August, though, so.
Mid-August, yes.
Yes.
We should have the information.
So with the, you know, because I think the drawings I saw were just for police, right? But did not see anything in terms of build-out requirements for, uh, temporary location, which is what this lease is for. Um, and I don't know if on the fire side, they have the modifications, the north and south, for the additional personnel that'll be stationed there included. Is, is all that gonna be included in what we hopefully would see in July?
That will be included in what you'll see in July. Uh, the Fire Department, um, they have been working with, uh, the union as well as, and this will be one of our main point of discussions on Wednesday, on where we are going to be potentially having at the north station and some of those cost mechanisms. Once we have this, we do have some tentative numbers that we're looking at, and then we'll be going out to bid, um, for some of the build-outs for St. Lucy's. It's not gonna be heavy construction. Uh, I think anticipated number or the line item number that we have in there is approximately fifty-two seventy-five thousand to make St. Lucy's.
To go out to bid, so that's not being included in Cunningham Limp's.
No, we will go out, correct. Rather than paying for, um, Cunningham Limp and Partners to design that, Chris has been handling that when the owners are upside to be able to save the cost.
Okay, so when is that scheduled to go out to bid?
Uh, Chris has already received some quotes and realized, like I said, the quotes have came in right around thirty thousand, which is over our bid limit. So he's put the bid, gathered the bid documents, and that'll be going out shortly.
So would that be on our agenda for mid-July?
Yes.
I mean, it would need to get on the street within the next week.
If it's ready now, if this gets approved tonight, or at least we have directions to approve this, the bids will be out tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Rabello. Um, I have a couple of questions about the signage. Is the signage included with the ARPA funds? That we're gonna build that for the, the, the station? The police station?
Temporary signage that would be needed at St. Lucy's.
Are we gonna have, you know, because that's gonna be one of the main things is there may be people that don't know where the police station went.
Correct.
And it happens.
Yeah, a, a, any signage will be actually, we're gonna do everything that we can to get to the public. They'll inform them, whether it's through all of our media with signings on the road, all that kind of stuff. So yes, that will be as part of the project. As you are aware, uh, Councilman, the amount of money that we have for ARPA is not gonna be able to cover the cost for the police and fire building. So those ancillary costs will, yes, just be budgeted line items that will come out of.
Okay, so those will pop up down the line.
That'll be part of the relocation.
You know, big signage there on Jefferson Avenue.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, what is the feeling of the, the lease? Mr. Vitale?
I would just say that we do need to strike that clause. Any motion would need to be dependent on striking that clause about having to pay their legal fees. I even have some concerns over the hundred and fifty percent. As a landlord, that seems unnecessarily punitive. But, um, you know, I don't want to send us back to square one here either. But we definitely need to take out that thing about paying their legal fees. That's a good catch.
I will. Ms. Rusi?
Um, could we table this and some, not necessarily to the drawing board, but just to discuss those two provisions with the AOD and maybe bring something else back?
Well, I think what we would do is, we would make the approval condition on striking those.
Well, striking, striking just subsection B or the whole, I mean, we have to be a little bit more specific on what we're striking.
Forty-five that contained the, so striking section forty-five.
They will never agree to striking entire forty-five.
Yeah, just striking primarily section B, number, number two. Roman numeral small i.
So I think we would make our approval conditional on that. And then if it can't be done, it can come back in front of us. He won't have approval if he can't strike that section.
What, let me just ask, Mr. Lent, what, what is the issue if this comes back on the fifteenth?
The issue is, is we do have some preliminary work that we're trying to get done at that building. So we are able to move in once decisions are made. Uh, we do have cabling, internet, security, cameras, also a little bit of the build-out. So not waiting, waiting until we get an actual signed document, um, will be tougher. Um, we're not gonna be moving in until the September date. But being able to have everything up and ready is going to be a challenge. I would, i- if council so chooses, I would, I, I think that, you know, with Bob's negotiating, I think we'll be able to get negotiated number two out. I think that's probably the most that we'll be able to get out of the attorney fees. And they have been very, very good to work with in regards to, like I said, when the original contract came in, it said twelve months. We worked on extending that all the way up to the eighteen months, so we wouldn't have that escalator be in there. Um, and they were amicable for that. They just left the same number in that they had in there for the twelve-month time and when they extended to eighteen months. So without speaking for them, um, I do feel that there's potentially where we could say, hey, can we just go up a hundred and twenty-five percent rather than a hundred and fifty percent? But that's just negotiating. We're hoping that everything is, is on time and we don't have to worry about using the escalator. We have bought ourselves a little bit of time with that additional six months.
Okay.
So I suppose the motion would be to, to accept, to give grant conditional approval to the city attorney to sign the lease, conditional upon striking section forty-five.
Two.
Two.
Does that work? I'll, I'll support that.
Because I don't want us to lose that month.
It's scary.
And negotiating down, trying to get to the one twenty-five?
I wouldn't make it dependent on that.
Okay, so you're not in there, but you can negotiate that. Try to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Certainly, I wouldn't be against it.
You've supported that, Mr. Friderick. Questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Seven to zero passes. Thank you. Item ten, request to approve the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendments. Was it the prior meeting that's brought back to this meeting? Good evening, Renee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As requested, I'm bringing back the budget amendments that we had first proposed two weeks ago. And we had made some changes to those amendments. On, in your packet, there's a, um, a budget amendments are detailed and any kind of changes are noted in the notes column along the side. Anything new or anything revised is mentioned there. So for the general fund specifically, um, we are proposing an extra five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue, which is coming mostly from, um, interest revenue, but also some from parks and recs fees. So we went through, um, um, City Manager and I went through very carefully to try to find every, um, amount we could, still be conservative, so that we're safe, um, within budget at the end of the year. And as you know, um, throughout the year, there's many changes. When you put the budget in place, it's your best guess at the time. And things happen throughout the year that require the amendments. As you can see from your packet also that I have detailed out all the amendments that have been done throughout the year and showed the starting point for our fund balance, which, um, the total general fund balance was the eighteen million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand. It had some other components to it, but the most of it, the majority of it, was the unassigned fund balance of sixteen million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand. Throughout the year, there were several budget amendments and, um, the information is there if you have any questions on it. But including this request today, which would add back in two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to the general fund balance, we would end the year for our budget at, um, fourteen million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So, and then there are other amendments, um, requested for the other funds. As I stated, that that is all detailed out in your packet. If you would have any questions?
Questions? Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. I guess maybe just going forward, if we know we're going to be having overruns on budget to the, it sounded like sixty-five thousand for pest control, some of the overtime, some of the, you know, temporary things, maybe bring that to us first. I mean, remember, Kip, back when, like years ago, we did that with Fire Overtime. They were, um, inching and encroaching upon using up all their overtime, um, prior to the end of the fiscal year. So they came back to us and said, hey, could you give us more? And we did. I think we did, I, I think we've done it before with road and services too, maybe. And that way, we set a cap and we bless it prior to it just coming to us after it's already spent. I think maybe going forward, that would be a nice kind of policy to see from administration, just like we used to do it. When we used to see these big numbers where, you know, I, I guess this goes to John's, John's smiling over there. John always smiles over there. The, um, progress reports we get where we show in percentages how much of a budget amount we are spending. I mean, you know, if we know it's five months left in the fiscal year and we already ran through all our road and control money, you're going to need more. Maybe you give council a heads up so we can say, okay, here's more. So it's not just kind of a blank check, approve it after it's already spent.
For sure. And, and I want to state too, though, that, for example, because we just use the big ones, uh, the pool temporary, that they go up a hundred and fifty-five. That's not because we're at a hundred and fifty-five now. We actually were still under the budgeted amount or the previous budget amendment amount. We just knew that when the, the pool season starts, our wages for temporary wages down the pool is about fifty thousand dollars every two weeks. So when we brought this, the last time, we knew we had fifty, or sorry, we had two weeks remaining or two pay periods remaining and a half that will be occurred because it's gonna fall into the next one. So we are looking at about a hundred and forty thousand coming within the next month. So that's why we kind of put this. It wasn't that it was already spent. We just know based on looking at history, looking at what the rates are. Now, if we get in a, getting a ton of rain days and we cancel more, this a hundred and fifty-five is gonna be more than what we need. We just have to anticipate, okay, hey, here's where we are, here's what the wages are, here's where we think we are going to be. And that's where these numbers come from. It's not necessarily where we are today. Because a lot of these, when the pool's only open three months and it's a split season, where you're receiving pretty much, June is our busiest month. Then you have July and August, which follows in the next calendar year. It is, you know, May, June, July, and August are the, the pool season and then it's over. We have to anticipate where we're going to be. So, so those ones are all like that. Hence why, if you remember, it does say in here, Fire is now at a hundred and ten thousand. Last time we projected this, two weeks ago, is at a hundred and twenty. We got, we've had one pay period since then. So when we saw that pay period, we're like, oh, it actually came in almost fourteen thousand, less than what we were tracking. So we feel comfortable to lower it in at ten thousand. And just because, once again, we put one-ten, that is our guess based on, okay, hey, here's where the high pay periods are. We know it's summer, that's when most people take off. We finally are very fortunate. We're starting to get a lot of individuals off of the workers' comp, so it's a little bit lower. The one-ten is, is a conservative estimate by us. Realistically, it's probably gonna be closer to ninety. But we gotta make sure we cover it in case we do have a lot of people take off for vacation.
Right.
In the last couple of weeks.
And I guess I could just draw a distinction between something like, um, Fire Overtime, which is heavily dependent upon the personnel and what happens. Same with our pest control, which is dependent upon how many people we set, you know, how many properties we bates, right? So those are a little bit different than something like the pool, which is dependent maybe upon weather. But if we have good days, like I think we hope we do, and we know what the pool operating hours are and we have it staffed and we have hired these people, I think that's a little less hypothetical than, you know what I mean? That, that's where we know we're probably likely going to be having these numbers versus, you know, and having these overruns versus we foresee this maybe happening. I, I think we just want to be informed a little bit as things go on a little bit better.
And in full transparency, the pool overrun really wasn't overrun, it was a bad budget number set. We set a bad budget number.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Well, thank you for finally saying that, because being a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars over what was just a half-million-dollar budget, wasn't just a few extra hours here or there, right? There, there had to be some mistake in the original number. I don't even think that reflects in the budget that was, we went through last week, where rather than the pool being around five hundred and fifty, it ends up being a seven hundred and twenty-thousand-dollar budget now. So thank you for finally saying that. And I think in terms of how these have been handled in the past, because it, when we get towards the end of the season, you know, we're typically not dealing with whole departments having to go up. And I think that goes to where the original budget number just wasn't correct. And I do get in terms of some of the things of workmen's comp and associated, police, fire overtime are a bit associated. But also in the past, I'm gonna bring this up again. Two weeks have gone by. No financial reports to council. None.
They were sent out. They were, I was, they were given to City Manager's office and they were sent out. You did not receive them?
Yeah, they went to council. And actually, when, I know you brought up last time too, they were sent out prior to that too.
The last one I received was February.
Yeah, we had, so March, April, all were sent out.
Ever received them?
Yeah. I can resend them to you, but I even did double-check and look, because they were sent out to the council group.
Anyone?
Yeah, I don't remember, but.
I do have a copy of it.
Yeah.
With me, but, um, they have, we've been working on getting up to date on these. We don't have May done yet. We're getting May's statements in and working on it, but we've sent everything through April.
Okay.
Um, but if there's some kind of glitch in why they're not getting out, I'll figure that out and get them up to you, so I apologize.
Yeah, all because it's like we're getting check requests every two weeks. So the data is being entered, right? And it's just a matter of running the report, once you know all the month is closed out.
Right.
Right?
But reconciling the statements and getting the interest, getting all the journal entries in there so that it reflects as much as you can for the month.
And that includes the income side of it, the revenue side as well?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, yeah, I guess if we can just check again tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll find out. Yeah, I don't know why you're not getting it.
The last one I received was February.
Yeah, I, I, I apologize. I, um, I thought everybody was getting those. I didn't know you weren't getting them.
Okay. Um, so a few additional questions on here. So it looks like the street lighting is trending upward, where we have to sign two hundred thousand dollars extra for that.
That is correct.
It's one of the additional changes. Yeah, in terms of the pest control, you know, there were times in the past where, um, I, I know Denise was tracking that very well and where she had to come in and like, I, I think like in March and ask for a budget amendment, because we knew we were spending more than what we had. So, um, if the department had stayed on top and looking in the system, which I know several of them do, uh, they can definitely get ahead of it. Uh, in terms of the, the motor pool revenue, the, um, the vehicle sales, what was that? The three hundred and twenty-one thousand increase there?
Some of that is, is, is a combination of things. Some of it is.
The auction sales, basically?
Some of it's auction stuff and some of it's, um, insurance money coming in for vehicles that have been totaled out. And the money will go in there and help offset the cost of the new vehicle.
Okay.
That's replacing that, those totaled out vehicles.
Okay. And I'm assuming the capital ally vehicles for the Kodiak fire truck being moved out, that's just because it's within motor pool. We're not expecting to get that until twenty twenty-six? I think. Chief Piper, do you? Oh, this one's a fire truck, Kodiak fire truck. Oh, okay. So we're just, that, could they eventually get paid out of the motor pool fund? We're just taking it out of the, the motor pool budget for this year to pay later?
In the budget, yeah.
Well, no, this would be a decrease in the expenditure by seven hundred and two thousand dollars, right? So that would be taking it out of the, out of the budget?
I think I might have put that in there incorrectly, now that you say that.
Yeah, this was, if, if council remembers, we knew the, the fire truck got pushed back and we actually did the budget amendment when we authorized, they had the. we actually did the budget amendment when we authorized. They had the, I'm trying, I don't want to say sample.
Demo truck.
Demo, thank you for the word. The demo fire truck. And then we approved purchasing the demo fire truck, because we knew we weren't getting the other one. We were able to build up the fund balance. This is the purchase of that demo.
Demo truck, okay. And when's the expected delivery date of that?
We received that.
Oh, you said that's one we received?
Yeah, that's one we received.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Maybe in terms of the financial reports when they're sent out, maybe they could be sent with the agenda minutes, that type of email that we get every Friday. I think, you know, we expect that email. We look for that email sent to the clerk's office and just have it be included. But that, we can even do, under like the consent agenda, receive and file the financial reports when we get them. And that way, they're part of our packet. We are acknowledging, we are receiving them. We can have them in the, you know what I mean? Maybe just a little change to the process like that to add some, that way if we don't get them, you know that we don't get them. And if you send them out, we know that to look for them. I'm just, I'm just trying to think out loud.
We'll put them on the consent agenda.
Put them on the consent agenda as a receiving file, and they could be sent out with the agendas and minutes that we get every, around noon every Friday, because I love that email. I always read that email. And that way, we know to look for it within that email instead of as a separate email.
We've got them before from Natalie or Renee. It's a little inconsistency in how we've gotten them too.
Yeah.
Well, they're always coming from Natalie. She got them from Pamela. Natalie forwarded them out.
Okay, but we've got them also from Renee. We got them in December from Renee. I mean, I just looked it up. So I mean, sometimes you.
Yeah, just put them with that email. We always get this weekly email, and that way we know where to look for it.
With that, we'll need a motion to approve. Move to approve. By Mr. Frederick.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rabello. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Seven to zero. Thank you. Item eleven, ordinance amendment to the sanitary sewer rates. This was also marked back.
Thank you, everyone. This is an amended ordinance for the sewer rates, sanitary sewer rates, as requested by council from two weeks ago. We did change the proposal. The request originally was, only affected the readiness to serve charge. This has been let up to affect the commodity charge for the water and the sewer, and also the readiness to serve charge. This particular ordinance only addresses the commodity charge for the sewer, which is increasing the rate from sixty-nine thirty-two per thousand cubic feet up to seventy-three sixty per thousand cubic feet. And also, this is addressing the IWC charges, which are industrial waste charges, as we spoke about last time. This is a charge from GLWA, which we get charged, the city does, and this passes on to our industrial customers. It does not affect residential customers at all. And this rate increase is based on GLWA's increase, and this is just so that it's a hundred percent pass-through and doesn't cost the city anything at this rate with the increase. So overall, the increase, counting both this ordinance and the next one, is three point four percent. For the typical user, that's six ninety-nine a quarter. And that's made up of, like I said, of the commodity and the fixed rate charges. But they're kind of, a little bit, I don't know, I hope it's not confusing, because some of the charges are in one ordinance and some are in the other. But overall, that's what the increase is proposed.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
I was actually going to be, my question is, if we are acknowledging, like I said last, I don't think we ever really seen these, the readiness to serve charge broken out, where part of it goes to sanitary, part of it goes to water. Why aren't we including the part that goes to sanitary within the ordinance, the sanitary ordinance, and leaving the water ordinance just to address the water readiness to serve charge? It's not putting both the water and the sanitary readiness to serve charge combined within the water ordinance. It just sounds like, why are we using a water ordinance to address the readiness to serve charge that relates to sanitary sewer expenses and fees, when we have a separate sanitary fee ordinance that we could just add a subsection and break it out that way?
I guess I didn't know if I could change the ordinance like that. I wasn't sure I could have, should have checked on that, but.
That's right. So, yeah, that would take, unfortunately, when this ordinance was created, that was when the water and sewer were combined. So when the water and sewer became uncombined due to the regulations and the lawsuit that occurred, our ordinance only kind of recommends the water rate and how it's listed out as the water rate. So it would take a ordinance amendment slash change based on this body, which, asking legal right now, I believe we possibly could do that as part of this motion, if the motion is made, to draft a subsection of the ordinance listing the sewer rates separately in the water ordinance, because it doesn't really matter where it's at.
Well, I mean, listing the sewer rates within the sewer ordinance.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because, yeah, because what we're doing right now is an ordinance amendment.
Correct.
Regardless of how we break it out, what we are doing by changing the rates is, it says right there, amendment to the code of ordinance of the city, so it already is an ordinance amendment. So of course, you could have proposed that as part of an ordinance amendment, given we already are amending an ordinance. I just don't understand the explanation of why it hadn't been done that way, because, you know, especially post wherever that stormwater case was, I think we want to be very clear and keep our fees separate and our expenses separate. And it sounds like we're definitely doing that. But I think having the ordinances be really clean and not having sewer charges in the water ordinance when we have a separate sewer ordinance would go further into keeping these things very separated in the spirit of that lawsuit and the changes that we had to commence, which I think overall are a very good thing, accounting-wise and city responsibility, budget, finance-wise. But I just don't understand why we would just keep doing the ordinances the same way and saying, and here's a sanitary sewer charge in the water ordinance. That just doesn't make any sense to me. And we already are amending ordinances. So we can do whatever we want here in terms of amending ordinances. And that, just like back in 2014 or wherever it was, we amended the ordinance, not only rate-wise, but to add in that readiness to serve fee into the ordinance when it never had existed prior to the creation of GLWA. I mean, we did it then, so, anyway. That's my point, both on items, I guess, eleven and twelve. It implicates both of them. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rabello?
Is that something that we can do later?
Yeah, we'd do it as you're amending the ordinance. Yeah, we'd do it today. It just makes it cleaner, since we're amending it one time.
Okay. A couple of questions here. So this is totally a self-sustaining system.
Yes, it is.
So we have to sort of rise to the occasion to pay the bills here.
Right. We have to look forward and see what the needs are for the water and the sewer funds to maintain the system as it is, and to also look forward to different capital needs that come, that will be coming. We know that any system has to be maintained. And so we're looking at the current year coming up, and we're also looking forward. And so we're trying to address both of those.
There's a cap to this, correct? It can't, this is three point four percent?
Yep.
And it can't go over a certain, is it four percent? It can't go over four percent? Is there a?
It's three point four percent.
There's no cap. We, we're asking council to approve the three point four.
Right, okay.
So it won't go over the three point, because the rates are going to be set today if council approves them.
Okay.
That will be the rate. It'll be capped at the three point four percent. Council could so choose to say, no, we want to raise them ten percent. I'm just, so you could raise them whatever. There is no cap.
Okay. And I always wondered, who sort of makes this decision on?
Well, we have a utility rate study with AEW, Kyle Seidel, which he asks a lot of information from us, like what kind of usage there's been, and looks at all of our numbers, compiles all that together. And it's part of that packet that's included in your, in your packet that came from AEW. That's kind of the result of all of the study and the meetings that we have with him, with several people from within the city. And there's different proposals and.
So really, the GLWA is born out of the bankruptcy of Detroit? Is that basically who this association forms?
I honestly don't know. That was before my time. I don't know.
So these rates are conducive of a lot of, culminatory of a lot of expenses. You have our fees that we pay for water, which goes to Great Lakes Water Authority, which is a pass-through fee. They charge us. They can raise their rates. They were capped, where Great Lakes could only raise them to a max percentage. Now, after this year, that cap has gone away. So Great Lakes next year could raise those rates exponentially next year, which rumor is they probably are going to. We have to pay for that fee through Great Lakes Water Authority. So we're going to get how much our average annual user uses. We calculate that. We also have to calculate, when it comes to sewer, all of our sewer charges, any of our debt charges we have from any of the large projects we've done, any projects that we're going to do in the future, how much we pay for our labor for all of our water and sanitary, to take care of the water main breaks, sewer breaks, all of that. So all of that is calculated into the expense. Once you have what your expense is going to be, then you calculate what your revenue is needed to cover your expenses.
Okay. Yeah, this is, you know, we all have the same concerns. I mean, this GLWA looks like it serves like a hundred and twenty-seven different communities. So it's incredible. So, and we're, and we're just, I guess, you know, affordability of water, water quality, I mean, we all got to look at that for the future. So it's sort of, you know, you scratch your head, and when these water rates, they just always seem to be going up. But we have to maintain the system.
For sure.
Correct. And this proposal does give the user an option of reducing their water usage to lower their bill, since the increase is not just on the fixed charge, which was with the request from two weeks ago. And so this kind of addresses that issue. And so the person that's really struggling can do that if they so choose.
Ms. Rusi?
We talked about it, I think, a few weeks back, about putting something on the water bill to explaining this a little bit to the consumer. Is that something that we're going to move forward with?
I believe that is in the works with the city manager's office.
Matt is certainly working on that as we speak.
All right, great.
Looking at some surrounding communities, so we can be.
That's like one of our biggest, probably residence things, the water bill. And maybe if we had a little bit more explanation about the fixed and, yeah, all right, great.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. So I think in the future, is it our intent to keep having AEW do financial rates for us, or are we going to be able to do that internally?
I think it's, there's a, a lot that goes into it that we rely on AEW to be able to pull when it comes to SCMSD, some of their stuff, the rate sessions. There's a lot of rate sessions that takes on at GLWA that we don't have a representative that actually goes right now. But it is something that we can look at if we want to take that responsibility on.
It's basically just developing the spreadsheet.
It is, and plugging in all the numbers that we have. Well, we have the spreadsheet. I have the spreadsheet.
Yeah, okay. Because I know in the past, I don't think they're charging us, or this year they did, right? Because on the check request for last week, there's a six thousand dollar charge for fiscal year twenty-five user rates.
They have charged us in the past.
My understanding, they've always charged us, but I mean, I could be wrong.
No, because they were still doing this even when they weren't an engineering firm.
So they don't offer free?
Yep. So, okay. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the ordinance amendments, but include the paragraph H from the water rates, and then we'll just have the table that would just have the sewer rates and include that in with the sewer ordinance. And that paragraph H is basically talking about the readyness to serve charge.
I'll support that.
Move by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Rusi. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Seven to zero. Thank you. Item twelve is the amendment to the water rates. Did have an amendment on our desk when we got here?
And the twelve, item twelve, the new item that you have is just breaking down the differences between the water and sewer charges, quarterly and monthly. And so I could just pull the sewer portion out, put it in the other ordinance, and leave the water part in this ordinance. Already all separated. It's very clear. And that will serve the purpose, I believe.
Mr. Karen?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment with the change to pull the sewer rates out and just have the water rates included for the readiness to serve charge.
Support, supported by Mr. Rabello. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seven to zero. Thirteen, adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Okay. As you know, in accordance with the city charter and state law, the city must pass an appropriation resolution for the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The budget process does involve many hands working together to yield the best use of public funds. Administration began its work to prepare a budget recommendation immediately following the annual audit for the previous fiscal year. This work yielded an initial recommendation on budget in early April, which was delivered to each council member on April fifteenth, 2024, and then council conversations during the work session. Based on this, administration updated the budget recommendation and delivered it, and detailed answers to questions on May twenty-four of twenty-four. The administration welcomed additional feedback in advance of the June third meeting, where the public hearing and consideration of adoption would be on the agenda as an action item. After a robust conversation at the June third, 2024 meeting, the adoption of the budget was not passed, and a request for additional feedback from the city council was requested by the mayor and city manager. A recap of all proposed budget changes made after the April thirtieth budget session and the June third council meeting was sent to council. An updated fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget recommendation returns to city council this evening with reduced expenditures and a larger contribution to the fund balance of the general fund members. Per feedback, members of city council also requested an examination of revenues yielded from user and permit fees. A work session will be planned for late August to discuss revenues from fees for the city calendar, CDBG, and the court requested, this is requested from council members. So with the changes that have been made, reduced expenditures, the general fund being proposed today does have a surplus of five hundred and thirteen thousand, fifty-two dollars, that this would add to the fund balance. It's supposed to maintain the whole following fiscal year. This represents an addition of four hundred and ten thousand over the two-week ago budget recommendation, which had a one hundred and three thousand, fifty-two dollar contribution. With this budget, our total revenue is budgeted to be forty-six million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars in the general fund, and expenditures of forty-five million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, which leaves a net increase of the fund balance of five hundred and thirteen thousand, fifty-two dollars. These reductions that you, that I spoke of, the four hundred and ten thousand are made up of a reduction to alley paving of fifty thousand dollars, police building repairs of sixty thousand dollars, and capital outlay reduction in police and fire of two hundred and one hundred thousand respectively. And I guess if there are any questions?
Dustin, do you have anything else, or?
I think Renee covered it pretty well.
Questions? Mr. Vitale?
Only a quick statement. We asked you to come in with some savings, was the direction, and you did it. And thank you.
Anyone else?
I would echo the same.
Mr. Rabello?
I would echo the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Do keep in mind, three hundred thousand was just pulling out money that we're going to eventually spend on police and fire anyway. So, but I do appreciate some of the other adjustments. We already indicated we were not going to spend the money on the alleys, on the vote from the last meeting. But there's several things of, you know, I'd asked for justification for the six vehicles, for the six new pickup trucks, for DPW and water and sewer, have not received that, unless that's another thing, family lost in my email.
for DPW and water and sewer, have not received that, unless that's another thing finally lost in my email. I know I'd asked for better justification for 12-mile water main, for how that was picked, did not receive that. Going back to late March, as, because one of the things that did increase in this budget was the motor pool allocation. I had asked for basically a five-year projection of motor pool, because we do have some large expenses that come later, so that we know it were covered in terms of, because Dustin, you and I met, I agreed with your methodology for how you did the allocations for this year. But to really prove that worked out, you need to see what it looks like over five years of some of these large expenses, and have not received that. So I'm still struggling. And in terms of, even once we get all the police and fire thing, and throw out a number, if it ends up being, we need $4 million to complete both those projects on top of the ARPA funds and some of the other funding that's there, that would bring our percent of fund balance down to about 21%. And kind of the bogey's 15. You always said we wanted to be around 30, or even more than that, to be financially healthy. So that's kind of what we're heading into, as well as expensive contracts coming up. So I do look forward to, you know, more robust discussions based on ideas, especially on the revenue side. Because I do think a lot of our, what we charge for has not been keeping up with what it costs us to do it. And, and while certain things are always meant to lose money, especially in parks and recommend, recommend, recommendations, recreation, they don't have to lose always as much in that. So especially for things that people pay to use and that. So versus open access parks and things like that. So, so just because I still have not received the, those several things I've requested, I'm still going to vote no.
Anyone else? Motion be in order?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Vitale to approve the budget as presented. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I am going to vote for this. There are some changes in it, not enough. But I know we have to get something on, some plan passed by June 30. I don't want to reconvene again. So I'm going to vote for this, but with the statement that we need to continue to work on this. John needs the information about the vehicles and whatever else he was talking about that he hasn't received yet prior to those vehicles or whatever coming to us for a voting agenda item. And I look forward to the work session planned for late August. One of the things I had said is, well, if, you know, per the user fees and permit fees, not so much user fees, but the permit fees, which are tied to the bolt analysis of having to be relayed to the cost of us providing that service. If a lot of that is staff time, which is, because I've seen some of these calculations, we know pursuant to the contracts we pass that those staff costs are going to go up by 2.5% a year by those contracts. So that could be a really good starting point to look at. I think some very non-controversial permit fee increases just because we can point to the contract and say, yes, the cost of the service is going up. Contractually, it's going up by at least 2.5%, let alone anything else that gets incorporated fee-wise into making those, you know, the ultimate fee. So I think that would be a good starting point, just to make sure we stay on trends and we recoup the money that we spend on these permit things and, you know, all of that. We are raising it by contract 2.5. We know that. We should at least have the user fees or the permit fees stay on pace to meet that. So we're not further in the gap between what we're charging and what it's actually costing us to perform and provide those individual services. So I think that's a good starting point. One question. I know one of the issues that came up was a procedural one during the budget hearing about the city manager's offices increase. And I know it's supposed to be tied to performance evaluation. Is that still in here? Or do you anticipate us being able to do a performance evaluation prior to?
We would do a performance evaluation.
Okay. Will you get that out to us then? Because we're running up to July 1st.
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay. And like I said, I know we have to get something passed. So I appreciate the direction we're heading, and I look forward to the work continuing to be done.
Mr. Rubello?
I agree with a lot of what Candace said. I mean, we have some budget sessions coming in August.
I'll send an email out trying to get that date down. So I'll send that out this week.
You know, if there was one good thing, I think that came with maybe the two-week delay here. And Renee, I know you and Dustin work very, very hard, and I thank you for that. But some new ideas are born, and there's some positivity in that. And, you know, maybe we grabbed, you know, a rung of the ladder and make this a little bit easier and see if there's stuff that's still in there that makes sense to change. So, thinking there.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Vitale to adopt the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Passes six to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bids, contracts, purchasers, request approval of signed contract with MDOT for the Stevens Street Patching Project. Good evening, Denise.
Mayor Council, good evening. What is before you tonight for consideration is authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for utilization of Transportation Improvement Program funding to do concrete patch repairs on Stevens between I-94 and Little Mac. This project is actually something that MDOT is bidding out. Those bids are due on July the 12th. But it is estimated under this contract that the City of St. Clair Shores would be responsible for approximately 18.28% of the total project cost. Their estimate is $1,260,000. And MDOT would then, using federal funding, be paying the balance of those costs. So we are asking council to authorize the city manager to sign this contract and enable us to move forward on the Stevens Patching Project.
Questions? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So 18 cents on the dollar is what we pay for, for some patching on Stevens. Move to approve.
Support. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rubello. Mr., question by Mr. Rubello?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Denise, in the future, if these things pop up, I'm sure they come up once a year, right?
Annually.
Annually?
Yep.
The Federal Transit Authority, do we have a choice? Sometimes do they do bike paths?
They, there are funds for bike paths, yes. We have not opted to utilize those funds. We, we have them in designs. We haven't actually executed any of those plans as of yet.
Because I know sometimes in the past, we've talked about, you know, how to connect certain parts of the city and so forth from the
Absolutely.
the nautical, the nautical mile association to the downtown district. I mean, I don't know if anything like that would ever fit in, in the future. Or just a plain old bike path going, you know, east to west. So I guess that's something this body would have to, you know, talk about and see if that's a direction. But I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Okay, great. We'll keep that in mind. There are connections, missing links and connections from other communities. So it's something we can look at.
Mr. Kieran?
Thank you. Denise, just something to follow up on with the change in scope for the water main project. Now that we're actually having a directional drill in the road versus a side. To follow up on this one, if the flags that we're going to get replaced in here in terms of doing the patching have already been designated? Or if there's a certain, you know, square footage that they're going to do? Thinking of, if we haven't started to designate where we're going to have to dig down to do the directional drill, pull out the bad slabs and dig there and leave good ones in place to maybe, if this goes farther, if this already covers all the bad ones within Stevens, then we're good. You know, we don't really need to worry about which ones we have to dig down for the directional drilling.
We can overlay the two, where we have to dig and then where we have, the patching locations have already been planned. They're out to bid. So, but we will overlay the two and provide that information.
All right, great. Thank you. And then if you could also provide, what's the plan for fiscal year '26 to '29, those two projects?
Absolutely.
In terms of what's being thought of, that'd be great.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rubello to approve the MDOT contract for the Stevens Street Patching Project. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. Item 14B is request to approve the motor pool automotive parts contract.
So Mr. Babcock is on vacation. So I'll take this one. This was at our last council meeting, and it got tabled. This is the one that when we were reading through the bid, it looked like the individual put kind of four minus 1%. We did call and talk to him. What he was indicating was it could be anywhere from four to 1%. He didn't know, as well as zero to 2%. Rather than getting in the weeds and not having an actual number, we're just asking council to recommend a one-year contract, avoiding any of the additional years on the contract, and then we'll go back out to bid in the next fiscal year.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Not to belabor the point from the last meeting, but we received one bid for this. It was 10 pages long. A lot of those pages are, you know, just some of the pro forma stuff. It came to us with this goofy page eight, where it says net increase plus three, minus 1%. And then minus 4% for the third year. And we were still being recommended to us by administration a multi-year contract to award, which that seemed kind of odd, given the uncertainty in what was actually being bid. And then we confirmed with the vendor, yeah, he can't really confirm years two or three. It wasn't like we had 15 bids and this was buried. We had one bid, 10 pages. And there was a pretty significant miss in page eight from administration that was inconsistent with what was being recommended by administration to us. How could page eight have been missed by administration, given it's a very simple page? I guess not for some people filling it out, but it's a very simple page. How did that not raise any red flags prior to this coming to us, to council in a 1,300-page packet for approval on that Monday night? When it's one bid, 10 pages, and there's pretty significant issues with one, with 10% on the pages? Why did administration not catch that before? I guess, what's the process? Because there are issues in these packets. And I was nice to raise item five issues in the packet. There were a couple of them prior to the meeting that resulted in getting pulled up because we couldn't have a decision on it because we weren't complying with our own ordinance this year. How does this happen where this comes to us on my doorstep on Friday, read this notice before Monday? I'm catching things in the misty rain 1,300 pages. It's not caught by administration. You even look at the bid tab here, and you look at the bid tab for one bid. It says year two extension, increase, decrease, 3%. That's not what it says. Year three, increase, decrease, 4%. That's not what it says. It says, why are these things not read more carefully? Why was this not caught prior to me catching it, reading it in the whole 1,300 pages as I'm sitting on my bed, literally going through the stuff, and I'm seeing it?
So, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of Brian. Brian is not here. But I will state, when you go through and you look at this, you're going to see numerous edits and mistakes that are corrected. I mean, just looking at page seven, there's red writing on one, two, three, four things. There's additional corrections on six. There's two more on five. There is
Right, I'm seeing the red.
Two more, two. So the, when, when staff receives these, staffs do go over each one of these individually. They look for any mistakes that they can. But there are grammatical errors that are going to slip through.
This is not a grammatical error. This is a significant thing that impacts whether we can award contract years two or three. And had I not caught this, we might have done that when even the vendor says, I can't commit to these. And we won't know what we're committing to.
Yeah. The, I mean, obviously.
This is not a missed period. I understand typeles happen. But this is a
Those mistakes made by the individuals who are submitting the send, I don't think any vendor is going to say, hey, I'm going to lower my price by 4%.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And year '26 by '27. He's reading this incorrectly. And if you look at the three and the 1%, it adds up to the four.
Oh, I know the vendor made the mistake, but how was that not caught so we weren't being recommended a multi-year contract? This, the vendor made a big mistake. I think we've had this type of mistake before, maybe even by this vendor. I'm not sure. But I know I've caught this type of thing before. But how does this not raise a red flag with administration saying they're thinking, what shall we recommend to council? Year one, year two, year three? Oh, let's recommend a multi-year. Well, we don't know the prices that are being, there's vagaries in terms of the pricing that's being proposed on this page. I just don't understand this. You know, like I said last time, it takes me a lot of time to go through this, even just to make decisions and to understand the issues. If I take for granted that everything in here is correct and the recommended motions and recommendations from administration are being correct, the administration caught the procedural stuff. And it just adds when it's like, I can't trust this stuff. I have to catch these things because for some reason it passed through how many hands of people who do this full-time. And I'm sitting on my bed on Sunday night after the Tony's catching this stuff, which is what happened with agenda item number five.
And I think too, if we go back and we actually want to simplify this as well, we have an individual company that we use. This is for batteries and parts when it comes to battery, oil, air, fuel filters, light parts.
Yeah, oil parts.
These are, these are a little bit of car parts, mostly when it comes to battery, oil, and air. Oil is a very fickle thing. I mean, same with gas prices.
It's commodity pricing.
Batteries as well, they are. 100% is commodity pricing.
But that doesn't mean, why can't we read this page?
So, so what I'm saying is when we have commodity prices and we're going out to bid, and as you mentioned, this, he, it was the only bidder. And this company we have used for multiple years. He's been the only bidder for numerous years. So rather than keep bringing it back as the only bidder, the person that we've been using, it's a local individual, I believe. And like I said, I can't speak for Brian. He is not here. So to simplify things is why, rather than to keep looking at and knowing that we can't look at the contract, that's why we're here today, to be able to approve the contract for the one-year contract, taking into consideration the, one of the mistakes of many that was made on this form from the vendor, that we were able to modify and fix before it got to council. Why that one's a mess, I don't know.
Yeah, this is just a big thing not to miss. This is a big thing. This is a simple page to look at. And it is 100% needed to be understood for administration to be able to recommend how many years of contract we award. And had this not been caught, we were being recommended a multi-year contract. It's just frustrating because this takes a lot of time to go through this. I know it takes a lot of time to put together. But that's a lot of hands and a lot of departments and a lot of eyes putting together what constitutes our whole package that then the 1,300 pages come to each one of us. But this is just a part-time job for us, all of us, that we balance with everything else going on in our lives. And we get Friday morning on our doorstep, and we have to have it mastered by Monday night. And it takes a lot of time, and that's taking for granted that the stuff is accurate. When it's not accurate, that just takes up a whole lot more time. Look at agenda item five and the significant issues with that one. That winded up on my doorstep, that wound up on my doorstep because it wasn't caught before. And it's frustrating. I just want administration to do better on these things. It goes through a lot of hands and a lot of eyes. It needs to be caught. And I'm not talking missed periods that happens. I'm talking about understanding a very simple page eight.
Okay.
I'll move to approve year one.
Moved by Ms. Rusi.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rubello. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. 15, consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Kieran, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Mr. Lent, updates and thoughts from prior, prior meeting?
Mr. Kieran asked finance to send the council the monthly reports. Our reports have been sent to council through April 2024, and May is currently in process. I'll make sure that that is resent since it sounds like Mr. Kieran was, did not receive that email. Mr. Kieran asked for the worksheet that is used to calculate the police and fire pension that was sent to council with the packet. Mr. Kieran would like to see an alternate proposal that splits it between the fixed charge and per unit price regarding the sanitary sewer change that was proposed, and that was what was approved in the meeting earlier. Ms. Rusi would like to see other proposals for readiness to serve charge. Once again, that was approved in the packet earlier. Mr. Kieran asked why we don't have the same standard slash level of service for tree removal restoration, regardless of who removes it. Mr. Babcock responded back. He was able to find the tree remover on Chalane that was done to accommodate the excavation for a water main break.
the excavation for a water main break. Therefore, all roots were dug out all the way down to the water main. After the repair, the site was added to the water main break restoration list. That is why it was given sod. We will be working with our contractors to make sure that the stump restorations are done properly and look the best possible. Mr. Vitale said there is a tree north of nine mile one Industrial Drive East that has branches hanging low, obstructing driver's view. That tree at nine mile one Industrial Drive has been trimmed up to improve visibility. Ms. Rusi asked for clarification on the motor pool automotive parts contract. It was not clear if this is a multi-year contract in the books. This was just discussed and approved. Mr. Karen suggested that it be required for Yo and Yo to reach out to council and DDA for a consultation, asking if there is anything of interest they should be looking at. Yo and Yo have been asked to reach out to council and the DDA before the start of the 2024 audit.
No, that wasn't an ask. It was a requirement.
Okay.
In the motion. So they're required to do that.
They will be required to reach out. Mr. Frederick said that they are still waiting for the sign to be placed on Red Maple Lane across the street from Tropical Smoothie so people can stop parking there. We will check on the status of the no parking sign. Ms. Rusi requested that council get an email when board committee is having a special meeting before the meeting has been held. The city clerk has added this to the distribution process. Mr. Karen said the social district ordinance rules may need to come back to council for review. The item for discussion of the DDA was to review what council approved related to the social district, not to change the social district rules. Staff will ensure that the agenda for future meetings is clear to avoid confusion. Mr. Karen mentioned the budget used to have a five-year budget included for review, but not for approval. He asked that if that needs to be brought back because he believes it was submitted in the audit. Finance contacted Yo and Yo to see about adding this back to the audit and adding the five-year budget included for review.
So, no clarification on that?
Okay.
The five-year wasn't in the audit? It was a statement in the audit that we do five-year budgeting for planning purposes, so.
Okay. Mr. Karen mentioned Kite Monroe Park. Several native plants were planted last year. The plants were covered with too much mulch and died. He would like to work directly with Rob when filling in the bed and the plants. That has been addressed.
Thank you. Item seventeen, comments by individual council members. Mr. Vitale?
Okay. Council, I am generally not someone who wants to call out audience members that we have tonight, but I've been wanting to make this comment for about an hour and a half now. You have, ma'am, you have the best behaved daughter.
As we put her to sleep.
All without a tablet or a phone or anything like that. And I'm the same, I'm the same kind of parent, so kudos to you for sweet, well-behaved daughter who's been quiet this whole long boring meeting. And I'm sure you're here to speak because I can't imagine why you would subject yourself to this otherwise, but I just wanted to call that out, not putting you on the hot spot or anything, but very commendable. Denise, could we, oh, I'm sorry, Denise. Ma'am, could we put up, I asked for an update about the, I asked to get a list of all of the easement work that DTE and consumers has performed. I still haven't gotten anything on that, obviously because it's subpar in, in terms of what I've seen. Next slide, I just wanted to call this out. Aaron Stahl, who runs the waterfront environmental committee ramp cleanups, somehow, I think it was through some sort of online signup, she had a literal army out there. And I, it's absolutely blown away. Unfortunately, I didn't get to see any of this because I, they're all doing this at 10:00 AM, and I'm out there at 7:00 AM when there's no traffic cutting weeds because I don't want to get run over. And incidentally, if anybody wants to get an early start with me, I would invite you. I can only really go as long as my battery holds out on my trimmer. But we did, we knocked a lot of stuff out, and you can see all those trash bags that were picked up. So kudos to them. And I'm gonna keep it short, so, no, that wasn't supposed to be up there. I'm sorry. That's an old presentation I recycled. So it's not just staff that does it. So anyways, I'll keep it short so we can get the comments tonight, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess?
I just wanna just commend Dustin for taking the time to, I think it was two and a half hours that we sat down and talked this, this week about the budget. And I just really appreciate being the newest one here and sometimes a little confused because I haven't done it for years like all of you have. So I just really want to just tell you my appreciation. Don't have a lot to say, but farmers markets coming up on the 23rd. I love our farmers markets. Have a lot of fun being out, and hopefully the weather will be good. Also, just a very small teaser that the Cool City is planning Wine on the Water for July 20th. Deep, look for details to come. I don't, just a little teaser out there, but it will be a fee and it will be limited. So if that's something you're interested in, keep watch. Also, a lot of people have been asking about our garage sale, our citywide garage sale, which is going to be the third weekend in August. And you'll be able to register at the Civic Center starting the first week of July. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Rebelo?
Thank you. I just want to make a, a request for Liz. I know she was here earlier. She's gone. But back in February, she had a, a meeting with real estate brokers, agents, and developers. And I was wondering if maybe she had anything coming up again for another meeting. There's nothing scheduled? Okay. If I could request at some point, you know, in the next couple of weeks or months, that, that she could get something scheduled, that'd be interesting to attend. Thank you. Literary walk, St. Clair Shores Literary Walk from noon to three. That's on June 29th, and that's with M.L. Liebler. M.L. Liebler, our poet laureate here in St. Clair Shores, who is actually also a star in the parade with his, his Beatles band. But that's gonna be at the Blossom Heath Park on Jefferson. So I've attended one of those, and he even let me read one time. He picked something for me to read, but it's interesting. He does a great job. If you're interested in attending a meeting for the Senior Advisory Committee, you can give Matt Hubinski a call at 498-2414. A lot of things discussed for the seniors. We even have a party coming up. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, well, we have a social district that's coming up this Saturday night. It's gonna be hot. She's promised hot, better than, better than the last one rain. And coming out there, it's always a lot of fun. And discover the Nautical Mile here in St. Clair Shores. Always a good time with good restaurants down there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. First off, congratulations to the Historical Mission on the new marker that they put on the pier, celebrating the history of Lake St. Clair, having been, I'm no longer because we shuffle these things around a little bit, but having been liaison to that commission for a number of years, I know how much work and love and editing go into the, that work that, to produce the finished marker. So hopefully everyone enjoys it, and it was, it's a very nice to see. I know even Gross Point decided to, I won't say copy the marker, but was inspired by the idea, and they will be doing their dedication in August. So we actually beat them to it, and they thought it was such a good idea. They, why went for their community. So it's nice to see, you know, other people taking notice of what we do in our city. And one, just last thing, I want to thank Parks and Rec for all the work they did. Gain the Veterans Memorial Park, just beautiful for, really for life. It was the fundraiser for the American Cancer Society, 22 hours. So some people spend the night, and some of these events are held all over the nation, are held at things like, you know, high school tracks and things, and the fact that we have this beautiful lakefront facility with nice bathrooms and shade and trees and, you know, things for the kids to do. It's, it's truly special to be able to host this type of event in St. Clair Shores and that, you know, this event is regional from a couple of states. They choose to have it in St. Clair Shores. So I know, I wasn't as, as involved this year as I have been in previous years. My teammate passed away from cancer, of course, in spring. So, but I know I was there for the opening ceremonies, and I know people really enjoyed the, the venue, and it looked really nice when asked at for St. Clair Shores, and it's definitely something to be proud of. So thank you to Parks and Rec and the staff for the, working with the, the organization on that to help raise funds and awareness for the Cancer Society. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks to all the council members and Historical Commission came out to the dedication Thursday. I know it meant a lot for Historical Commission, several of the council members out there to see the latest marker that they put together commemorating the history of Lake St. Clair. So, and thank you for Denise to coordinating the ordering and delivering and Parks and Rec for getting it all installed up there. Just greatly appreciate. Really does finish out the pier to have the three informational kiosks for the three flower beds out there. So, and the sign just came out great. So thanks to Jerry and Kathy for all the design work and Historical Commission to put that together. So it's in the third bed on the pier, so anyone can go down and check out the history of Lake St. Clair. A couple of updates that were missed from the last meeting. My head asked about the Bride's Park, the trees being relocated so they weren't interfering with the disc golf course. I did check Sunday night or last night to go out there, and they were moved. So that was good to see. While I was out there, also updated our inventory for the arboretum. So we'll get that ordered to staff as well. I did have a question that we had three concrete pads that are out there for the disc golf that don't have the markers still. So Rob, if you can probably follow up with Tommy on, I, I don't know if they, when we moved them, whether we had like dual markers or something, or what's the story there?
Yeah, for all that.
Okay. And then also, while you're talking, do we ever update the map of the disc golf course on the website? I think that was one graphic thing we needed to get updated.
I thought we did it last year, but I'll-
Okay. Thank you. And any update regarding priority taking over as our trash hauler?
Yes, that was one.
That was one of your city manager reports?
City manager report. So if you want, I can-
I can tell, I can tell.
Okay. Yep. So a group of us went all up to Priority Health, or Priority Waste. They have a location on Hall Road. It was elaborate, and it was very interesting to see. Every one of their-
What type of facility is it?
It is their, it's not their landfill. It's just actually their corporate offices.
Okay.
But at their corporate offices, they have an entire headquarters that actually you look like you're going into, and there are TVs, camera screens everywhere. Every one of their trucks are camered with six different cameras. So you're actually able to see the trash on both sides, the drivers inside the cam, outside, what's being picked up. They're able to tell if anything gets spilt on the road, where it is, where they're able to clean it up. They're able to tell if the trash is out, trash wasn't out, what they're picking up. So they're able to handle all that. They actually have a dispatch center person for each location that it actually has eyes on each one of their drivers. It is very elaborate. They would love to be able to invite council members up to be able to do a tour of their facility, see how other operations work, and, and what new technology that they are providing. As well as during that meeting, I did say that I would like to have them come down and meet with council. This meeting, officially as we are aware, was completely packed. So they are looking to potentially come at our July 15th meeting. But before that, they are looking to try to set up a date, and I would try to get with some of the councils so you guys are able to kind of go up, see their operation. But myself-
I'm a little more concerned of, do they understand, you know, do they understand the routes? Where all the little side streets are, where the little culverts are, right?
And with that, they did, when they purchased GFL, they did purchase a lot of their operations. So a lot, majority of the drivers are going to be staying. There is going to be a transition phase. You still are going to be seeing GFL trucks out there. They're, they're gonna have a little sticker on them at first, but they are right now working 24/7 at night. As soon as the trucks come in, they're getting the cameras and everything set up. So they are ready to hit the ground running when that happens. They also use AI to help with the roads, so they actually can put notes in the system that says, make sure, do not put trash can here. I'm gonna use Jefferson for an example. Do not put it in front of the driveways. Trash can needs to be located here. Here's where it is. This is an issue. If we have a special route where you're picking up somebody's stuff from the, in their front porch because they're disabled or whatever, all of that will be taken care of. It'll actually detail their entire route, what is the quickest of the route. So they said there will be some systems where the AI is learning the route for the first few months, but after that, they'll be seamless. But it is very technologically advanced. It is, it is really, it is very unique to be honest with you. Now, they don't expect to have anything there. I, I mean, just-
Here's what you're gonna have to deal with.
Yeah.
July 1st, they take over. Monday pickup. Five of your seven council members live within that collection district.
Yep.
Okay. So they're, they bought the business, they bought the contract, they gotta hit the ground running. This thing, waiting three months for software to update?
Yeah. They're gonna have the same drivers. They're gonna have the same route.
I'm, with all due respect, I'm, I'm hearing a sales pitch from them. I want to hear that when they take over July 1st, they got it covered. We know who the route supervisor are. When things get screwed up, we know who directly staff can call, right? So that we can get on it, and we can push that this transition's gonna be as-
Seamless.
Less chaotic as possible. I ain't gonna use the word seamless. Council and Burgess ain't gonna use that.
And I guess that was the terminology.
There's gonna be mistakes. We know that.
For sure. And that's what they were stating. There are going to be mistakes as they go through that. They expect a seem, a close to seamless process through this. Don Beretta will still be our rep. Don Beretta was being picked out for the time being. They are still keeping a lot of the, like I said, the same drivers, same route supervisors. A lot of the staff is just staying consistent. They even bought some of the, like I said, they bought all the trucks, the same staff.
Okay. All right. And the other thing I was gonna ask, more towards either Dustin or Matt, you know, six weeks ago, Matt, you were asked to try and dig into the JCI lease agreement. Any progress? Report out on understanding that, because that does have financial implications as well.
Yes, I've been working with not only the information that was left to me by my predecessor, but also with our building maintenance crews as well to understand the issues that we come up against on a preventive maintenance contract, as well as reviewing the previous agreement as well. So work is in progress on that.
Any insight on the energy savings calculation, which was supposed to be the savings back to us yet?
So where our records don't seem to indicate is that the follow-up audits happened in a timely manner. So there's not a lot of great information, particularly specific to that topic.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Okay. Thank you. First off, on the way here, I got a call from Janet, who we'll all remember has the tree that we cut down in her backyard to 10 feet tall, and now the tree is growing again. So she's very concerned about the roots, which probably grew a lot more because they, the tree was cut, and that she's worried about her basement. So we may have to send somebody back out or whatever. I know we had an arborist out there that decided that that-
It should have never been cut at 10 feet.
Right. No, I, I agree with that. We should cut that right down and get it out of there.
That's what normal people would do.
So anyway, Janet, you know who I'm talking about, right?
I do.
Okay. Next up, congrats to all the parade winners. Way to go. And I hope, Dave, did you like your parade umbrella? Was that nice?
I hope I don't have to use it for a while.
Well, that's the whole idea. You give you an umbrella, you should never have to use it.
Thank you for doing that.
All right. Get your calendars out. Wednesday, August 7th is the 2024 golf tournament that benefits the St. Clair Shores Adaptive and Special Needs Program. It's an 8:00 AM shotgun. It sells out fast. And I know, Rob, you're pretty active with all that, so appreciate all that. That's Wednesday, August 7th, 8:00 AM start. Shorewood Kiwanis, we've heard already, Wednesday, August 28th for their car cruise. And Tuesday, September 10th, yes, Tuesday, September 10th, Wigs for Kids Annual Gala. And I got one more. This is a big one too. So the Optimist Club, who, first of all, big thanks to them who, they did a really nice police and fire breakfast this past week honoring a bunch of firefighters and a bunch of police officers. And I want to thank the two chiefs for their participation because without that, it would be tough to do it. But big thanks to the Optimist Club for doing that. So here's a way to say thanks to the Optimist Club. On Friday, July 12th, is their second annual scholarship golf outing. It's sponsored by Ed Jones, Edward Jones Financial, as well as I think Malouf Jewelers. It's sponsored by Ed Jones, Edward Jones Financial, as well as I think Maloof Jewelers. And it's going to be at the St. Clair Shores Golf Club. Again, it'll be an 8:00 a.m. registration, 9:00 a.m. shotgun start, 18-hole scramble. If you're interested, I'm going to give you my, my cell number, call me, we'll get you hooked up with a, with a foursome or you can register your foursome. My number's 586-808-3478. Don't make me regret that. All right? So, Optimist Club of St. Clair Shores, and you can pay with Venmo or I think we have even some PayPal possibly, or check, cash, whatever. All right, let's talk library real quick, real quick, real quick. All right, Friends Book Discussion Group will be meeting on July 10th at 1:00 p.m. in the library meeting room to discuss Black Cake, a novel by Charmaine Wilkerson. All are welcome, no registration is needed. Anyone interested in gardening is welcome at the Yardner's Business Planning Meeting for the Yardners of St. Clair Shores. The meeting will be held in the library meeting room on July 8th at 7:00 p.m. Children ages 12 to 36 months and their caregivers are invited to toddler drop-in play at the library Thursday, June 20th, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. Toys will be available in the Gilstorf Meeting Room, no registration. Come and get your game on at the library, board games for kids ages four and up and their adults will be available in the Gilstorf Meeting Room for families and friends to enjoy together on Friday, June 28th from 1:00 to 4:00. Winners get bragging rights on that one. The library is also excited to announce that summer reading is back. Adults, you can register for summer reading and have a chance to win weekly prizes. There's also book bingo, completing a bingo with books and activities energy you into an additional prize drawing. Kids can register for their summer reading log and get their first raffle ticket at the summer reading kickoff program on Tuesday, June 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Make a button and get a glitter tattoo. Due to the generosity of Parks and Rec Department, thanks, Rob, a special kickoff-only raffle prize will be up for grabs to St. Clair Shores residents. There will be programs for kids and teens, book camps for all ages for, will be focused on children three to seven. Maker Thursdays for kids in grades three through five only with required registration and two teen-only programs. For complete information regarding these programs, pick up a library newsletter, visit us on Facebook or ask your favorite librarian at the library. The library extends its gratitude to Rogers Elementary School, part of the Lakeshore Group, for having us at their fifth grade lock-in this year. Students and volunteers had the opportunity to use some of the library's Maker Space equipment, including 3D pens and some button makers. So, thanks again to Lakeshore Schools for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. City manager report?
No report now.
Item 19, so audience participation, you have five minutes to speak on the, any item you wish to. Anyone who would like to speak on our audience participation? We just need the name of the city you reside in, then Mr. Deacon, Renee will show you where to sign in after, okay? Thank you.
My name is David Deacon and I reside in St. Clair Shores. Only got about nine items, so I'll watch the clock here.
Yes, sir.
I can't tell you how disappointed I was at the last meeting, watching everybody look in amazement at what Mr. Karen brought up. It's like none of you did your homework. Now, my recollection was a few months ago, there was a request made that the packets go out at least a week before the meeting. Obviously, that ain't happening. So, why don't you just put your foot down and get that done? Because there's nothing urgent that can't be brought up during the meeting if it is urgent. But the agendas that you're looking at, there's nothing that I can see ever that urgent. One of the things that is striking me is that priorities, when it comes to the money being spent, there's a lot of want stuff being purchased, but you're forgetting about need. And so, you got to get a better balance. You know, I see money being spent on things that aren't that necessary. And if you want some examples, I got lots of them. I noted that last weekend, there was an emergency over in Oakland County and the sheriff was able to respond immediately. And I was wondering if there's been every, any considerations to the adoption of that program with the 911 so that the officers in their cruisers have that information the same time the call is made in. Might be something to look into. I noted that there's a comparison in the water and sewer information that was in your packet. And I don't understand why there's such a diversity between the cost or charges, I guess, between Roseville at the bottom end, St. Clair, or Gross Point Shores is the top end. The spectrum of difference is phenomenal. Maybe somebody can take the time to explain that anomaly to me. Lastly, I put in an application to be on one of the committees. That's well over a year ago. And I noted that in the minutes of the subcommittee of council, that my name wasn't even mentioned when it came to a particular committee. And I don't understand why I wasn't even considered. There were three others considered for the three openings. Why wouldn't you consider all of them? I don't know. Another problem I had was I came to the clerk's office with an application and the individual took the application and started to walk away. And I said, wait a second, I want a receipt for that application. What do you want that for? And my response was, I could turn my back and you could tear it up and throw it away. But if I get a receipt, now I know that you have it. And one employee in that office and your clerk's office raised her thumb to the affirmative, saying in effect, good for you. So, reluctantly, the clerk who took the application went over, made a copy, certified that I, that it was received. I thought you should know that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Two quick items for them. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else who wants to speak? Ma'am, anything, anybody else here? Comments? Okay. We'll go back to Mayor's comments, just two quick ones. Stone Blossoms this Wednesday, 7:00 o'clock over at Veterans Memorial. Again, Stone Blossoms will be the band. And don't forget, June 28th will be the fireworks at Veterans Memorial. So, you can get your tickets over there at Parks and Rec, it's always a crowded event. You can get the parking over there, that's always limited at the parking, at the spots there across the street, so get your tickets. Again, it will be June 28th. Rain date is the 29th, but we're not going to need that this year, so it'll be June 28th, Veterans Memorial.
Well said.
And probably they'll get shut off right at 10:00 o'clock. It's always a great event and the Activities Committee did a fine job with that. With that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Good work. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?